Good evening, everyone. We are from closed session to the open session. Attorney, did you have any reportable action on closed session?
The City Council convened in closed session for a conference with legal counsel on one litigation item noted on the agenda and provided direction to legal counsel, but there is no reportable action.
Thank you. And the meeting called in the order, may I have your roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lamson.
Here.
Mayor Sandu.
Here. Please rise for the silent prayer and flag salute. Councilmember Lamson, can you please read us on the pledge of allegiance?
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nida, can you replay statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, March 6th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, March 7th at 9:00 a.m. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. Counsel, any approval, addition or deletion on agenda?
Yeah, I'd like to pull J3, please.
Thank you. There is no presentation. Next agenda item H, public comment.
Now, I'll pull it up. Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the City Council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers. Once completed, forward the speaker card to the clerk. Those persons wishing to speak on any item scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at the time that item is being considered.
Thank you. Any speakers this time?
Not for this, no.
Thank you. Next agenda item is report by City Council members on regional board, commission, and committees. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yes, reporting out on our SECOG meeting two weeks ago, we did not have a quorum, so the SECOG board could not take any action. We did hear a presentation from a couple of speakers. One was from the Rails to Trails Organization, which is a group, it's a national group, and they're really trying to do projects that take easements and things like that from railroads and old rail lines and make some bike trails and walking trails and things like that. We also heard from gentlemen from up on the northeast coast of California in Humboldt County, where they did quite a few of these trails and connected major cities through barren land. And so they talked about the benefits of that and the economic drivers that came with that in their community. So that was the bulk of the meeting. Like I said, we did not have a quorum, so we could not take any action on any items. But we did have that discussion, and it was pretty interesting. So that's all I have to report.
Councilmember Farmer.
I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Campion.
Nothing to report, thank you.
Councilmember Lamson.
Yes, we had a youth commission meeting last night, and the youth commission has been approached by the U.S. Census to help promote that. And everyone needs to take the census and say who was living, or count who was living with them on April 1st. April 4th, the youth commission will be doing a pancake breakfast at the Extravaganza, and the proceeds from that actually go towards scholarships for local high school students. Scholarship applications will be available in April, so if anybody has any high school seniors, they can apply for that scholarship. The youth commission only has a couple, maybe three more meetings, and they're currently recruiting for next year. So the recruiting process will last from March through May. So come to a meeting if you're interested, and you can get the applications from the youth commissioners or online, I believe that will be available soon. There's also, the youth commission does a senior technology project from 3 to 4, April 15th and 29th, at Galt United Methodist Church, where senior citizens can go and ask for help on how to work their phones and their computers, and it's been really successful. I went to the air quality board meeting last week, last Thursday, and Pepsi Sacramento was asking for some grants. And they organized and began in 1971, and Pepsi has 460 full-time employees in the Sacramento area. And so in partnership with the SAC Metro Air Quality Board, they're going to engage in a transformative electrification project, which means they're going to remove 20 diesel tractor trucks from California roads and put in electric tractor trucks. And so that will improve some of our local air quality in the Sacramento area. And they're going to leverage PepsiCo's resources and knowledge to be the catalyst and lead the industry in this area. It's kind of exciting. That's all I have.
Thank you. I also attended the STA Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting on February 26th in Sacramento. And most likely, there was around 20 to 30 public comments regarding that transportation expenditure plan. And this next regular meeting can be on March 12th, and that time they can be voting on, they can make a decision, and I will get back to you next meeting. Thank you. All right, next agenda item J, consent calendar. Approve the consent calendar except the item J3. This was pulled by Councilmember Campion. Would you approve?
I move to approve items J1 and 2.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion moved by Vice Mayor Lozano, seconded by Councilmember Lamson. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passed by 5 to 0. Thank you. Next agenda item is approval of the Final MAP subdivision improvement agreement and development impact fees credit agreement for those who L. Councilmember.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank staff for making changes to these subdivision agreements. You know, the standard language now does include the conditions of tentative MAP approval, which I think is very important, and I think staff does agree. So I appreciate that. And in talking with City Attorney earlier today, I think there was one minor issue in the agreement under H2, item number 2, first paragraph. It makes reference to Exhibit A, which is the conditions of approval, which is actually marked as Exhibit B in the report. So just a typo, and it needs to be fixed. Other than that, I would motion for approval.
But in second.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Councilmember Campion and seconded by Councilmember Lamson. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passed by 5 to 0. Thank you. Next agenda item is K, schedule matter notice of public hearing. And there is no public hearing. Regular calendar, City Manager's Office. Subject, proposed language for Assembly Bill 2220. Mr. Haglund.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have a presentation that we're going to give tonight, and Amy Mendez, our Economic Development Manager, is going to start off that presentation, followed by our Community Development Director, Chris Arias, and then myself.
Good evening, Mayor Sandu, members of council, Amy Mendez, Economic Development Manager. Chris, I'm hoping that you can click through for me. Do you have the... Since three of us are going to be tackling this, it's probably better if you drive.
I'll drive.
So just wanted to go through the property history. I know that this is sort of the millionth time you've heard this, but we do want to make sure that we cover some of the background in this project and this property in general to make sure that we're clear. I think that there's been some information circulating that isn't necessarily factual. And so part of this presentation does go through information you may have heard already, but we did want to touch on some of the background and kind of how we got to where we're at today. So property history, this is a map of the Galt Market and surrounding city-owned properties. The properties were gifted to the city by the state in 1969 via AB 1089, Assembly Bill 1089. The Assembly Bill restricts use for parks and recreation purposes generally, is what AB 1089 was set in place for. In 1982, recognizing the fact that this property had unique financial potential, the city amended AB 1089 with Assembly Bill 3773, which is, I think, what everybody is pretty familiar with. Still provides for the deed restrictions on the property as it relates to parks and recreation purposes, but it authorized the city to operate the Galt Market. And that was really the revenue generator and the reason that the city sought to amend that legislation. For the last 38 years, the market has generated significant revenue for the city. I don't think that's, you know, anything that anybody can argue. It's been a great resource for the community for parks and rec purposes. Right now, what we've come to really realize is the fact that the revenue source that is being produced by the Galt Market is significantly declining, and it's projected to continue. And so that was sort of the reason that we came up with this plan now called the Galt Market Community Plan. Initially, this project was started in about 2017 through some meetings we had with council for strategic planning. In 2018, it became memorialized in the strategic plan, which was called the Civic Center Property Master Plan. So it's changed in terms of a title, really moving away from the Civic Center, but still working with the idea that the property could be developed for something other than simply the Galt Market. How do we take advantage of what the market has done for the community over the last 38 years and really turn it into sort of an epicenter for the city in an area that we could develop further? It's underutilized, there's a lot of opportunity there, it's a great location right off the freeway. And so the project has evolved a little bit from the Civic Center focus and really has come to more of a full-scale development project. So, you know, why is the change needed? Why are we seeking to amend the Assembly Bill 3773, which restricts the property for use for the Galt Market with revenue going to parks and recreation, but also restricts the entire property for use for parks and recreation purposes? There's been a significant shift in retail, and the retail environment has transformed over the last decade, and the market has not adapted to that. And so really, we've seen this shift, and the market has really remained the same. And so how do we revitalize the market? That's part of this project. There's been a significant decline in revenue, as we said, as well as an increase in the expenses of the market, which has created a deficit not only in the Parks and Rec Fund, but also in the general fund. And this has caused a threat to the city's long-term solvency. And so really looking at the value of the property and what we have, how do we take advantage of, you know, really what's been a unique type of operation for the city of Galt? And really, this is what the city is known for, is the Galt Market. This just shows the market revenue declines that have occurred since 2005. So from 2005 until 2019, we've seen a million dollars annually decrease in the parks and recreation, or the Galt Market. That is included with 810,000, and this is kind of the most recent number we had, of expenses that have increased. And so we have this decrease in market revenue, increase in expenses, and seeing the trend is expected to continue, this project really was sort of the staple of kind of taking advantage of the market, but also transforming the area to generate additional revenue. I'll let Chris cover the next couple of slides.
Good evening, Mayor and council member, Chris Arias, Community Development Director. So I'll talk about the, I'll talk on the next couple of slides. They're going to focus on the California Energy Commission grant and also the Galt Market Master Plan. So there are other components, too, but the City Manager and Amy will come back and talk about those, and that's the public-private partnership, and then also the legislative So we were fortunate enough to receive a large grant from the California Energy Commission. I believe we received that in 2017. The main purpose of that Energy Commission grant was for the Climate Action Plan, which is the next item on the agenda. The Climate Action Plan is the city's roadmap to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, you know, that are required by the state. So when we submitted for the grant, programs or plans that were consistent with the grant were also eligible for grant activity. So we knew that we had the Galt Market Master Plan in our background because of the strategic plan from previous council. So we put that in the grant for funding, and then we also have the Carillion Boulevard Master Plan that we're working on doing. So those, both of those programs help support GHG reduction strategies. The Carillion Boulevard Master Plan can reduce idling time and reduce car emissions. And the Galt Market Master Plan has the opportunity to provide a combination of uses and an infill setting, which is really smart growth. So when you have those combination of uses together, you're going to cut vehicle miles traveled, because people can walk and get to places without getting in a car. So it's really considered smart growth, and that was the reason the California Energy Commission supported that as part of the grant. We went through a lot of gyrations on how we should approach this plan. We initially thought, well, we'll just do it as a typical planning project, right? Where we come up with some ideas, we do some colors on the map, zoning and land use, and then we present that to the community, we go through the process, we get it approved, we hang it on the wall. We're not sure if that plan is ever able to get built and if it's sustainable. So as we started working through our approach, we decided that we didn't want to create a plan that was unsustainable. So that's why we partnered with the Lewis Group to help guide some of that plan, to make sure that whatever it is we design can end up ultimately being built. So that was a key part of that. The other part, too, is how we approached the planning process. We didn't want to just come to the community with a couple of plans and say, this is what we're thinking, what do you think? Due to the significance of this project, we really wanted to solicit community feedback before we started putting pencil to paper and creating a plan. This is a very significant project, and we didn't want to just pay lip service and check a box and come to the community. We really wanted the community involvement in helping shape this plan. So that is the main reason why we decided to wait on this project and actually go to the community first before actually coming up with an alternative. So we see that as a really important part of this, is a community engagement. And as you know, that's going to start March 9th with the first meeting, and then March 30th with the second meeting. We will have three community meetings pertaining to design. The first meeting on March 9th, we plan to just listen and get feedback from the community. The second meeting, we plan to then, based on some of that feedback, start putting pencil to paper and have the community that attends that meeting draw up some scenarios. And then with those, we then plan to come back with a third meeting with alternatives based on what we heard at those community meetings. In between those community meetings, we do plan to have an online survey to help reach people who can't attend the meetings to see what ideas that they might have for the site. So that's kind of a background on how we got to, you know, and we often hear that we're putting the cart before the horse because we don't have a plan, but we think that's okay. We can work and work concurrently with our planning process and these other processes that we're talking about. So we did bring Williams &amp; Patton onboard mid-2019. We did interview a number of design firms. We really liked Williams &amp; Patton. Well, we liked their personnel, we thought the personnel fit with Galt, but they also did a wide variety of projects that we thought were similar to what we're trying to do. So we thought they were a good fit for Galt. So in addition to the community meetings, we have been talking to stakeholders, including the school district, Lewis. We do see Lewis as a stakeholder in this. So we have been talking to many people. And as part of this plan, and I'm going to talk about it on the next slide, is the idea, and Amy touched on it, is to create highest, higher and better uses, not just for the Galt Market property, but also surrounding properties. And I think that's an important component that sometimes gets lost in the discussion, what we're trying to do. Because the plan will include more than just the Galt Market property. So I think you've all seen this map before. This is the map of the planning area. The purple or blue is the city-owned property that is deed restricted. The yellow portions are city properties without the deed restrictions. The red or burgundy property, those are school district-owned properties, and then the green are private properties. So we decided, as Amy mentioned, you know, what drove this were two factors. The need to try to create a new city hall and government center, and then trying to support and enhance market revenue. So that was what the driver was. But as we were looking at this area, we know that the bulk of this property goes underused. If you look at all that land south of Caroline Avenue, most of it goes underused on a regular basis, maybe outside of some of the Parks and Rec buildings on Chabola. But the majority of that property sits vacant. So we know that we can have, in some of those areas, higher and better uses that not only will provide, you know, supplements to the Galt Market, because if we do develop surrounding properties, including the school district property, we get potential revenue from property tax and any sales tax that may be generated from them, in addition to a Galt Market that will stay there and enhance their revenue. So the combination of Galt Market revenue, property tax, sales taxes, and others can really help contribute more funding to Parks and Rec. So in addition to the school district properties and the city property, we do have private property involved. And as planners, we just like clean boundaries, that's part of it. But the other part is, too, a lot of those commercial properties are underused. And we do believe that when we do start bringing development into the area, it does start helping create a demand for neighboring parcels. And we have the opportunity then to expand that planning footprint and maybe get higher and better uses into the private properties. But I would add that we don't just go and take properties as part of a plan. Properties, private properties that are involved in this can continue to operate as they are. Any transaction with a new plan would be between willing property owners and buyers, developers, and builders. So just because they're included in the plan doesn't mean, you know, we're going to go take their property. The other issue in this area, which we've identified, is we have great commercial properties along Fairway Drive with great visibility to the freeway, and we feel that they're underused. And part of why they're underused is the access to them. So part of this plan will be to look at the internal circulation in this area to help open up those commercial properties to make them more viable. So the plan itself has, you know, wider, a wider footprint, obviously, than just the Galt property, but for our purposes, obviously, the Galt property is most important. If we do end up with a government center in there, because we don't know what's going to come out through the community process, it is possible that we lose ball fields, we, you know, the library building is removed, city hall is removed, possibly some Parks and Rec buildings. But if we do lose them, the uses, as we said before, there's no net loss. There is a possibility that we have combined buildings, sharing government offices with the school district, and then consolidating city services into one building where you don't need the extra buildings. So we hope to get somewhat of an efficiency from the buildings and the footprints that are on the site and creating a government center. What it ultimately looks like, though, and I, and then we hear this, we don't have the plan yet. So whatever happens will come out and be fleshed out through the planning process and the community process that will start March 9th. So I think that's kind of the background of, you know, the planning and where we are. I hope I didn't miss anything. I think Amy is back up and going to talk about the risk assessment. And when we're finished, we'd be glad to answer any questions you'll have.
I think, too, in addition to what Chris had mentioned, it's important to realize that once this Galt Market Community Plan is approved, if it's approved, each piece of that project is going to have to be negotiated, whether it be with the Lewis Group or with another developer, or if, you know, the city is going to be proposing something on the property. Obviously, council is going to have a say in what that looks like and how that transpires. And so the market plan is really just a land use plan to identify uses for the property, better to utilize the property. But at the end of the day, each of those projects, and, you know, anything that's proposed on the property will come back to City Council for identification and approval. So one thing that I think Chris skipped over really quick, just wanting to highlight the fact that there's a couple of different things going on as part of this Galt Market Community Plan. So we have the CEC funding from the California Energy Commission, which is funding the Galt Market Community Plan. We also have the SECOG grant, which is the Galt Market Risk Assessment. So the risk assessment is being funded by SECOG through a grant that we received. There is the public-private partnership with Lewis Group, which is kind of a third leg to the stool. And then legislative change is one of the last items that we'll be talking about. And so these are all included as part of the market plan development, pieces that we're trying to fit in as part of the development for the market plan. But the Galt Market Risk Assessment and feasibility analysis is being conducted by a consultant out of Portland. Her name's Michelle Reeves, and she's with Civilist Consultants. She's actually going to be here for the March 30th community meeting. She'll be talking to vendors, speaking with customers at the market. She will be attending the community meeting that night to talk to residents, really trying to do a deep dive at the market and understand who's shopping there, what people like about it, what they don't like, what changes they'd like to see. The idea is that we are including, you know, as part of this risk assessment, what happens if we don't do anything with the market? If we just maintain the way that it is right now, what does that look like going into the future? And one of the risks that we run into in speaking with the consultant is, she works in these types of environments all over the nation, and the market is really changing for Galt flea market-type entities. And those vendors that are selling out there are sending their kids to college. Their kids aren't taking over to be vendors at markets like this in the future. The customers that are there, you know, their kids may not shop at this market moving into the future. And so you run the risk of losing both vendors and customers if you maintain the market the way that it's going right now. And so the idea is, risk assessment, what happens if we don't do anything? But really, the idea is to utilize her ideas to increase the market revenue. What needs to be done to tie this into the entire project? How do we create a synergy out there? What kind of tenant mix do we need to be looking for? How do we change the layout? Does it need to be changed? What modifications are needed? Do you create more of a plaza area for the market instead of having, you know, a cyclone fence wrapped around it? What options are there for us to enhance it, really to change the dynamic of it so that people in Galt and people from the outside area see this as a destination and want to shop? You know, back in its heyday, people did drive to the market from, you know, in Manteca, you know, where I, that's what everybody knows the market, Galt 4 is the market. And so how do we bring that back? And so how do we bring that back? Because really, the retail world has evolved into a destination. What's, what's the entertainment component that goes along with shopping? What do you get, the experience that goes along with it? And so the idea really is to utilize this input from the consultant to identify ways that we can shift and change the market to evolve with the retail environment today. How do we create a synergy with the surrounding uses that potentially would be created by this? Additional retail restaurants, really creating some pedestrian-oriented traffic with residential being infused as part of the project, higher densities to create that walkability. How do we create a connection into the Old Town area? You know, we've talked to the consultant, Williams &amp; Patton, already about our ideas, and really trying to create that connectivity into the Old Town area is important, because people that live and shop in this area, having that connectivity is really important. Chris, you can go ahead. In terms of the exclusive negotiating agreement that we have with the Lewis Group, this is a public-private partnership. And this wasn't something that we had the Lewis Plan Communities, you know, come knocking on our door asking about projects. We sought out developers for this project. And one of the things I think Chris mentioned was the fact that we didn't want to design a plan that had all this community input and all this, you know, great idea of how much development we could do with retail or entertainment or whatever it might be, and not have it be viable from a market standpoint. What really can the market absorb? What are people looking for, developers looking for, or retailers looking for? Is this an area that fits for them? And so really, the idea was to partner with Lewis to get a clear concept of what kind of development could be absorbed on this property. There is a lot of underutilized space, and how do we take advantage of that? The agreement we have with Lewis does not commit the city to entering into any further agreement for sale or disposition of the property. This is really just a feasibility analysis period. We're looking at what uses we'd like to see on the property. We're gathering feedback from the, feedback from the community. At the same time, the Lewis Group is identifying users that potentially would be interested in this property. Is there an environment for retail on this property? Also, we agree not to negotiate with any other entity that's part of this agreement on the, on the GALT market property. This is exclusively an agreement we have with them so that they can research and do their outreach to determine if there is a market for retail or residential or office use, entertainment use, restaurant, whatever it might be. And the one thing that we, you know, we did interview several developers before we came to meet Lewis. And that most of the developers that we talked to were retail developers. And looking at, you know, how do we create the connectivity between the market? How do we enhance the market? How do we use that to draw people in and have additional retail that feed into that? Residential was a component of that. We knew that we wanted for the walkability component, to bring pedestrian traffic into the area. And Lewis, the Lewis Plan Communities group was the only developer we talked to that was experienced in all of those. They do residential development, high density. They do mixed use. They've experienced with, you know, retail all over the West Coast. And so this was a developer that really fit that niche. They were comfortable with infill development. And most of the developers that we actually had spoke to strictly were either just retail or residential. They really didn't have that plethora and that background for the different types of development. So we landed with Lewis Plan Communities, and they're excited about GALT. They think that there's potential here. And they, they do some good projects within, you know, throughout California. One of the reasons that we talked about a private-public-private partnership really had to do with, we know there's a development opportunity here. There is a significant leakage of sales tax in this community. And working in economic development and talking to different retailers, there are retail uses that want to be in GALT. The problem we run into is we just don't have a lot of retail space available. And there is the Simmerhorn property, which is 45 acres just off of the 99. It's a huge development. It's going to require a significant infusion of capital to develop that property. And we're not working with a traditional commercial developer on the site. And so it's taken a lot longer, I think, than anticipated to develop. And so we continue to see this massive amount of sales leakage. We did an analytical report last year with Econ Solutions through HDL, which is our sales tax consultant. And that report showed that we had $325 million in annual sales leakage in GALT. So our residents are spending $325 million outside of GALT to shop and to eat and to dine and for entertainment purposes. And that's $3.25 million in sales tax leakage on an annual basis. And so there is a demand for retail development and commercial development here. And so having a development partner to help us on that attraction component is really something I think that's a benefit. They also, as I mentioned, have the market expertise when it comes to what is viable on the property. And the process moving forward is a transparent one. There isn't anything hidden as it relates to the development moving forward. If we choose to work with Lewis moving into the future, there would be a, you know, another agreement. This exclusive negotiating agreement has nothing to do with the sale or disposition of property. And so if we decide to move forward, and Lewis seems like a viable partner for development of any part of the property, there would be a long-term revenue analysis that would have to be done to show what that revenue source is moving into the future, whether it be sales tax or property tax. CFD, whatever it might be, that has to be included as part of any agreement moving forward, so we understand what that revenue source looks like. Also, in addition, any project that, that does move forward would require a financial pro forma. So we see what the revenue is that any developer is seeking to benefit on the property. And so this isn't a sort of shell game of what type of revenue is being generated for the developer. We would be able to see that. And this is, as Chris mentioned, I think earlier we talked about it, this is a traditional redevelopment project, working with a developer, just like we did with GALT Place and just like we did with Brewster's. I will turn it over to Tom, our city manager, to talk about the assembly bill.
So as Amy has indicated, one of the things that would need to be modified in order to utilize the properties to a greater advantage for the city would be to modify the current restrictions in AB 3773. And so at the request of the city, an assembly bill was introduced on February 18. It was authored by Assembly Member Cooper, co-authored by Senator Galgiani. And it currently contains placeholder language, which just gives an intent of what amended language is intended to do when that amended language comes forward. So it's placeholder, essentially, AB 2220 has placeholder language at present, and it needs to be modified by March 18 in order to move forward in the legislative process. Ultimately, the bill can be amended up to August 21st. After the initial amendment by, by the 18th, as it moves through the legislative process, it's possible for the city to seek further modification to that language, especially dependent upon what happens with the GALT market community plan process. And so as I indicated, the AB 2220 does seek to modify the restrictions of AB 3773. And in modifying those restrictions, the verbiage of the proposed language would require that there be long-term, stable funding sources identified and dedicated to the operations of Parks and Recreation purposes prior to certainly any sale, lease, or other disposition of the land. But the language of the proposed bill also requires that in order to essentially consider any disposition of the land, whatever form of disposition that would take, that there would be this pro forma performed. And there has to be the identification of a long-term revenue source that would be dedicated to Parks and Recreation purposes. And, actually, if you could go back, I think. Oh, forward. Oh, there we go. All right. Sorry, Chris. The proposed legislation contains what is referred to as both a sunrise and sunset clause. The sunrise clause means that although the modification would take place timely, assuming that in, in July, the GALT City Council identifies a preferred alternative for the GALT market community plan itself, then all the rest of the pieces of the, the, the plan need to fall in place by June 30, 2021, to include the, the environmental review, in order for AB 3773 to ever be considered to be amended. If it's not, then Assembly Bill 2220 would have no force in effect. It also contains a sunset clause. And the sunset clause would, would assume that the sunset, the sunrise provision was met, meaning that a GALT market community plan was indeed adopted. And the sunset clause says that if development doesn't commence within 10 years of adoption, then the properties revert back to the provisions of AB 3773, unless in the last year of that 10-year term, the GALT City Council exercised its ability to, for a one-time extension of up to 10 years. So why the, that particular provision? It's just recognition that sometimes it can take quite a while for properties to develop. We may adopt the plan, have the ability to do it, and there may be a, a period of time. Outside influences, economy, things like that can sometimes play a role in when projects actually get underway. And while we don't obviously have a crystal ball to know some of that information, we nonetheless want to put bookings around the total period of time that the properties would be available for this type of development, consistent with whatever the GALT market community plan ultimately identifies. So why AB 2220 now as opposed to sometime later? And that's because the restrictions of AB 3773 make it almost impossible to truly plan for some other type of uses unless we know that it is truly possible for the property deed restrictions to be modified. And so AB 2220 lays that foundation in preparing and determining whether the types of land uses that might be of interest to the, the, the public through the GALT market community plan process can truly be undertaken. And so, you know, if the Parks and Recreation deed restrictions is not anticipated to be removed, then the GMCP would not seek to include these types of uses that clearly through the draft of the AB 2220 language is seeking to institute these uses, much like the GALT market was a new use back in, in 82, or became an approved use in 82, that these new uses under 2220 would be used ultimately for the benefit of Parks and Recreation. And so we're doing this in tandem so that once approved, we can begin immediately to move into that phase of planning for the development and seeking ultimately with council approval, the types of developers and those sorts of things, you know, we, we want to be able to seize that opportunity to, to move forward with it, or have the city seize that opportunity to move forward with commencing the plan. And, and so a key point here is that a preferred alternative to the GALT market community plan will be presented to the council in July. And the deadline for modifications to AB 2220, including withdrawing it, well, the deadline for modifications is in August, approximately August 21st. It can be withdrawn as a piece of legislation at any time up to the point at which it's up for a final vote before the assembly, which would be in the, in Senate, which would be in the fall. And so with a preferred alternative coming to the council in July, that's a demarcation point at which the city council can either say, yes, we like this preferred alternative, or no, we don't like any of the alternatives. We, we, we want to stop, and because we don't have a preferred alternative to go with, we want to pull back the, the legislation itself. And so the timeline for the GALT market community plan itself, it's laid out in the staff report, but clearly, as Chris and Amy have talked about, March 9 is the first community meeting. On March 18, that's the deadline to submit the language for the, modifying, modifying the placeholder language essentially of AB 2220. March 30 is the second community meeting on the GALT market community plan. And then in the April-May timeframe, the, there'll be a third community meeting, which will bring back a conceptual rendering and design based on the first two community meetings. Then in June, this would advance to Parks and Recreation and Planning Commission review of the conceptual design alternatives with the city council's review in July. And then up there, you see August 21st. That's the final deadline to submit modifications to the language of AB 2220. But clearly, anytime after July, if it was the council's determination, AB 2220 could be withdrawn. And so as the plan unfolds, the next step is for public outreach. The community meetings that we've, we've talked about, how, talking about the enhancements to the GALT market and the conduct of the online survey to gather additional feedback and to conduct truly additional outreach. We have the, the ability then, consistent with that outreach process, the ability to evaluate more specific language if necessary for AB 2220, and to present the conceptual plans to the community as well as the, the commissions and the city council. And, and one of the items that Amy talked about, and I don't think was on the last slide, or the slide on the, the timeline, is that also in the, in the May-June timeframe is the results of this risk assessment or risk analysis will be completed and will come back. And I think that that is also going to play a key role in understanding from a much larger perspective, a national perspective from the group that is conducting the, the risk assessment, what they're seeing in these types of markets across the country, and ways in which either those markets have tried to modify themselves to continue to be relevant, or what's happened to those markets if they didn't do that, as well as clearly identifying what happens if we do nothing, or, you know, what's the, what typically happens to markets like this if you do nothing? And will this market, how does this market become re-energized, reconfigured, and redesigned in a way that allows it to continue over the long term, but in a much more economically viable surroundings and construct that allows for long-term revenue to Parks and Recreation? And I think the last slide is, highlights a card. Many of you may have received it in the mail already. This was sent out to the ZIP code again as part of the outreach to come out on March 9. on March 9th and March 30th, to be part of the community input process, and to have the community weigh in on the design of this entire area, and how might we make both the Galt Market better and this entry point to the city better, all with respect to the 44 acres, all designed with the intent of feeding more revenues to parks and recreation than we have today, and stemming the decline, what is essentially a 14-, 15-year decline in market revenues. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for this presentation. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Chris. I'm going to have a couple comments and a couple questions, then I will turn over to the council. And then after that, we can have a public comment to open.
Mayor Sandu, I just wanted to give you guys, and I forgot to mention earlier, that Jeb Elmore with the Lewis Group is actually in the audience. So if there's questions for Lewis Plan Communities, feel free to call him up. He's happy to answer any questions that anybody might have, public or from the council.
Thank you. You know, the first thing I see in the report, back in 2017, that Civic Center Master Plan was developed. And I believe that William and Patton, they was working with that Civic Plan, right?
No, in 2017, we got council approval to have Rainey Planning and Management work as the preferred consultant with the Energy Commission grant and the activities related to the Energy Commission grant. So Williams and Patton is working as a subcontractor under the Rainey Planning and Management contract. And that was in 2017. Williams and Patton came on board in 2019.
So that's mean from since that we have, we are working with that, that property since 17 until now, and that's plan was come up, and one way or the other, this three year, we don't move forward. Is that correct?
Well, there was a lot of activity. We were meeting within that period, as both Amy and I think mentioned, we were meeting with design firms, architects, and then also developers on how to proceed. And I think I mentioned it, and I'm sorry if I glossed over it, but we, through that time, we were trying to figure out how to proceed. We didn't, again, just want to create a plan, hang it on the wall, and it never gets built. So during that time period, in addition to meeting with the various groups, we were really trying to determine a path in which to follow.
So during that time, we spent a lot of staff time, a lot of consultant time?
Correct.
And their plan still was somewhere in the shelf. And now, we changing in the same proposal or same thing, now we change to GM, what they called is community plan, right? And that community plan just came up. My question is just, why, if we don't do that much the last three years, and why we doing so rush to judgment, and we do not have that much time to get the feedback or the community reach? It's not the same thing in the last meeting. I know there was a deadline. There was, we have to put, you know, the proposed language intent. Now we come up with the language. And there is no plan. You know, I'm talking, I do understand we can work from the other side to that, but it's most likely normal, you have a plan, and then you meet their date, and then after the plan, then you work with them. And then my, the other, just question on Tom, there is, what that mean co-author by Senator Galgian, what's her role on this? And could you explain to that?
Sure. She was a co-author to the legislation. You may recall attending a chamber lunch where this presentation was made. I think it might have been back in November. And the senator was there, and part of the presentation at that chamber lunch included the need to, that if the plan were going to be viable, part of the process would be to seek modification to AB 3773. And so Senator Galgiani, clearly wanting to be able to support what the city of Galt might want to do, apparently made a note of that. She apparently took a picture, or someone took a picture for her of the slide that talked about the need for modification of AB 3773. And so after, or as, I guess, Assembly Member Cooper was considering the language for the placeholder bill, or the placeholder language in the bill, Senator Galgiani's office contacted the city, wanted to know if we were still interested in the introduction of legislation, that she would be happy to do that. And we referred them to Assembly Member Cooper's office, because Assembly Member Cooper had already begun work on that. And so it's my understanding that Senator Galgiani's office conferred with Assembly Member Cooper's office, and she was willing to be a co-author on that legislation. And really, what it means is that it's, the legislation is introduced by both of the legislators.
So that's, so that's mean, AB, if we just go to the Cooper's office, it does not, this bill does not go to both, right? One way or the other, it's end up, it can be Cooper's office then approve, then it go to the senator, or just?
Well, yeah, the way the legislative process works is that oftentimes, on pieces of legislation, the author, the instant author seeks co-authorship, and as a sign of support for the legislation. And you see that on any, think of any piece of legislation. Back in the days when there was legislation considered for not being able to smoke in buildings and things like that, you know, there was a lot of Assembly members and senators that would sign on as co-authors. You might have 30 or 40 between both chambers signing on to that legislation. And it's just an indication that they support that particular piece of legislation. And I think that in this case, it's a way for both Assembly Member Cooper and Senator Galgiani to support the ultimate decision of the city.
Thank you. The next, I just want to, could you a little bit more explain on a sunrise?
Sure. So the sunrise clause essentially says that if this first thing doesn't happen, none of the rest of the legislation matters. And so the first thing that has to happen here is that the Galt Market Community Plan has to be adopted on or before June 30, 2021, in total. Now, you may identify in July, preferred alternatives that you want to go with. One of the alternatives will be status quo, do nothing. That will actually be the first alternative. And then there'll be other alternatives that you can choose from that make, include other designs. And you may say, as a council, well, we want to do nothing. And so that would cause the city to withdraw the legislation. At least, that would be what I would recommend if that were your decision. Or you may decide that, hey, we really like, you know, what, this could be a good design. This could be good for the community, it could be good for the area, it could be good for the downtown. And you decide that you want to go forward with that particular alternative. And so that would set on a course of action of then completing all of the planning process that Chris can more accurately and adequately describe, of coming up with and putting together the Galt Market Community Plan, including a, likely a program-level EIR, or, excuse me, Environmental Review, not EIR necessarily. Sorry. I'm harkening back to a different hat I wore at one time. And you complete all of those phases of the process. We think that that can be done by sometime around the first of the year, or shortly thereafter. But if it doesn't happen, then there is no AB 2220. And so that sunrise means that this has to happen first. The sun has to come up on this bill first. And the sun coming up is essentially defined as the adoption of the Galt Market Community Plan.
So that June 30, why we choose that date?
It was a date that was chosen simply to allow for the time necessary to get through the planning process, even in case something comes up. You know, we think it'll be earlier than that, but it's just sort of a prudent planning timeline.
But that date can be changed, right?
No, that date would be, it could be changed, it could be changed tonight by the council. You could change that tonight if you wanted to.
This is not kind of...
But under, if AB 2220 were modified, no, I don't think that there's a path forward to change that date if AB 2220 were modified and by the legislature and the governor.
I'm talking about this, this proposed bill is already in Cooper's office?
No. It doesn't go to Cooper's office until the city council...
So that's my question, if, as a council, if we want to modify that date, we can change?
Yes, and that's what I said just a minute ago. Yes.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts?
One other point of clarification. I just wanted to clarify the point. Chris, was there ever a Civic Center Master Plan adopted that was referred to in this presentation, you know, as the, kind of the genesis for this? Or was that sort of a first idea hit the council's priority? You guys tried to figure out how to do it, but there was never really a plan?
Correct. The latter is true, is this really just stemmed, the need for new city hall and public facilities just stemmed from issues and this building being beyond its serviceable life, and then the maintenance issues. So there was never, you know, a plan as to what we're going to do on the market. But I would say that, and Councilman Campion may recall that, over time, there was efforts to look for properties not in the market area, but for like a new city hall. And I remember undertaking land surveys to see if there were properties in the downtown or old town that could be suitable for a new city hall. So I've been here 15 years, and in that time, there has been efforts by past city managers and past city councils to create a new city hall. They, you know, based on the economy in 2008, and then the city's economic position, those efforts just were pulled back. And part of it was because of the condition of the city hall. The other part, too, is to consolidate offices, you know, having staff in the industrial zone, professional staff, having other staff in other locations, it's just not efficient for the public. So there has been that push to get the professional services of the city under one roof.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steph, for the presentation. I do have just a couple of clarifying questions. The first one's for Mr. Arias. In your part of the presentation, you talked about amenities going away, potentially. And you said there is, I think you said, no net loss. What did you mean by that?
So what I mean by that is if a facility is gone, for example, a softball field, we plan to have that replaced. Now, would it be replaced in that location? No. But it would be replaced somewhere else in the city. If the library is to be removed, we can't envision the city without a library. A library would be relocated, and possibly part of the joint government center, where you're then really getting an efficiency of government uses. So the idea is that if there is a public use on the site now, and it is removed as part of this planning process, the idea is to relocate that somewhere else in the city.
Okay. The other question I had is for Ms. Mendez. You talked about sales tax leakage, and I know we've heard that several times, certainly in my time on the council and before that. $325 million, over what period of time is that 325 million?
That's annually. So each year...
But that's not the tax.
No.
I know that's not the tax.
The sales. So people are essentially spending, three, Galt community members within the ZIP code of Galt are spending $325 million outside of the city. So, I mean, that's a variety of things, travel, entertainment. $3.25 is the sales tax.
Right.
Component of the 325 million in sales. So 325 million in sales is the leakage from the community of Galt.
Which equals about 3.25 million in sales tax revenue.
Correct.
Annually.
Annually.
Okay. And this, and that figure was, was that 1718 or 1819?
That was 2018, August 2018.
Okay. I have other comments, but I'd like to save those until I hear from the public.
Can I ask? Sure. So Amy, is the percentage of leakage 80%? Were we given a percentage?
We can calculate it. I didn't put that together, but it is pretty significant. And it really, it just comes down to the fact that, you know, Galt's a growing community, and retail sales, essentially restaurants, you know, Walmart, grocery stores, that's where we're getting the most of our sales tax from. But any other, you know, need for things that you can't buy, either online, or, we do get a portion of sales tax that comes through the online component we do receive. But anything that's brick and mortar, 325 million is what's happening outside of the city in terms of shopping on an annual basis. But again, it's, you know, a variety of different things that people spend their money on.
So out of the blue, what do you think the leakage is for Lodi and Elk Grove?
So I don't, I haven't looked at Elk Grove's, but I can tell you that our sales tax information that we receive from HDL every quarter shows a per capita sales tax for each city in comparable city that we have kind of listed. And Lodi's per capita sales tax is significantly higher than ours. And that is, and they're actually higher than anybody on the chart, outside of Rancho Cordova, I think is the highest. Their per capita sales is higher than Stockton, higher than Elk Grove. And that's because everybody in Galt and some of the surrounding areas are shopping in Lodi. They really have a significant retail base, restaurant base, and that continues to grow. And so they're benefiting from the residents of Galt in terms of the retail that they've been able to attract, because they do have a lot more retail than they do to serve their just general residents in terms of that area. It's close. There's not a lot of traffic compared to what you see going into Elk Grove. And so they do attract, you know, and their downtown, you know, plays into that as well. And so I think that there's a lot of different factors. But Lodi by far has one of the highest per capita sales tax generations of any place in the area.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a few comments and then wait for the rest of mine. Just to touch on a few things that have been talked about, I started taking some notes, I can remember. So let me start off with the sales tax leakage, since Councilman Campion brought that, or Campion, Councilwoman Lamson brought that at first. I mean, we know that we have a sales tax leakage. It's obvious. However, do I shop in Elk Grove? Yes. Do I want to live in Elk Grove? No. And there's a definite thing that people need to understand, especially and no offense to some that in this room that don't live in the city, but there's a reason why people live in this town. It's not because we have all the amenities. And I'm not going to sit here and say that we don't need certain things, and that I would never be in favor of certain things. I've since proved that I've been on this council, I have approved amenities to be built in this town. But what I would like to stress, and I've used this analogy many times, if I asked... If I asked Mr. Wenzel in the audience to name five things that he wanted to see in GALT, and I asked Mr. Soder or Ms. Martin or Mr. Vandenberg or Mr. Brosman or any of the people sitting there, each of you to name five things that you'd like to see in GALT, and you said, well, I'd like to see, you know, a Chipotle, and I'd like to see an Applebee's or Texas Roadhouse and a, you know, another gas station or whatever. If every one of you got those five things, this won't be GALT anymore. There's compromises that people make when they move to this town, and they have accepted some of those things that they're going to miss out on because of the quality of life they have in this town, and this is why they live here. And when I was on the campaign, I'm sure that other candidates that ran, if they, you know, when we went door to door and talked, you know, remember one thing I asked people? Why do you live in GALT? And the number one answer was quality of life. They felt safe here, which is mostly due, you know, to our great police force. They felt, they didn't like, you know, the traffic wasn't as bad as other places they came from. Did they, were they sad that they missed out on some things they didn't have? Yes, well, you know, I have to drive to Lodi to go to Home Depot, or I have to, if you want to go out to dinner once in a while to go to Texas Roadhouse, we have to go to Elk Grove. But I think there has to be a compromise, and we can't sit here and act like because we have a 3-point something million dollar sales tax leakage, that we need to just open the gates and invite every retail person in that wants to build something here in GALT. Because if that's the case, then I can tell you where I'm going to be moving out of here in 20 years, and probably a lot of people would too. And then we'll go to the next small town and we'll just do the same thing there all over again. Another thing that was brought up, you know, Chris, you were mentioning how, you know, the climate action plans on the agenda tonight, we were talking about how part of this was funding from the grant where we're trying to, you know, create better, you know, decrease our greenhouse gases and make, you know, quality air in GALT all is better and everything. But I think it's a little funny that in the last, I don't know, three or four years, we've approved what's the largest offender of greenhouse gases, which are drive-throughs. We have a new Starbucks on the east side, we have a Taco Bell, we have, we have another Starbucks coming, we have another Dutch Brothers coming. Those are probably the biggest offenders of drive-throughs. We have, so we just continue to approve all of those, which are the biggest offenders of greenhouse gases, but yet we claim to be, to be working towards a cleaner air. I just think it's a little hypocritical, I think we should maybe think about that moving forward on development. You know, my colleague here mentioned the net loss, or no net loss on the things you mentioned. I mean, we just renovated the library, and I'm not saying that it was an amount of money that we just can't walk away from and do something different, but like a lady spoke at a public comment a couple of weeks ago, you know, that library was dedicated to Marion Lawrence, and there's, there's just, there's other things that are, that are just kind of just as important as money in this community that you just can't say, well, the dollar trumps all that, so let's just, you know, do away with those things. Moving the softball fields, I know there's been talk about moving to Walker Park, I know that Mr. Solis talks about that, and I get that, you know, the facilities at Walker Park would be probably better. But there's also factors that should be thought of with things like that too. Am I not mistaken, I mean, softball complex is booked up pretty regularly for tournaments and such, isn't it not, Mr. Solis?
On the weekends, yes.
Okay, so when those people come in, you know, between their games, you know, they're walking over to McDonald's, they're walking over to local businesses, they're getting lunch, this and that, you're moving the epicenter of sports to Walker Park. You're now moving those dollars to be spent out of the center core of town to out where people will come off the freeway and they'll go down O Road and they'll, they'll A Street and they'll jump over to there, or they'll come down Bruceville from Elk Grove. So you've shifted that retail center. I mean, what's going to be the, the loss of money there? Now, if we develop this property into something else, then, you know, of course, we'll have that, but then, of course, you're just competing with now, you're creating direct competition for those businesses that are now lost out on the sports. So I'm just saying that with every negative, with every positive is a negative. And so I think you have to look at all these things. And I'm not against moving the sports complex if it makes sense. I do really have, I really do question the likelihood that we could eliminate things that are super important to the city, like, you know, some of the property, some of this property is used by the community, and if we're going to take that away, we, you mentioned, well, we're going to replace it somewhere else, but could we really do that? How would we really pay for a new city hall? Are we going to take away the GALT Aquatic Center? Is that going to be removed? And if so, are we going to really rebuild the aquatic center, which we know is not a profitable endeavor? So I am concerned about the fact that this property was given to the community of GALT to be used by the community, and now we're talking about no longer using it for the community, we're talking about using it to sell people things. Or to maybe create a new government building, you know, let's build a new city hall. I mean, honestly, I'm really hoping that one of the main things behind this plan is not the goal to build a new government and city facility. I don't, I don't think that would sit well with the people. I mean, I could be wrong, but I think that that's not really one of the main focal points of this. You know, touching on one other thing, Amy mentioned, you know, retail trends about flea markets, you know, possibly becoming outdated. And I know Ms. Mendez lives in Manteca. I thought it was interesting, it was in Lodi the other day, and I saw a sign that advertises the new flea market that Manteca is starting. I thought that was kind of interesting that Manteca would endeavor into something that seems to be a losing business concept. But maybe, well, theirs is on the weekend, so maybe, I don't know, maybe it's different. You know, traditional development or traditional redevelopment, you called it, Chris, I don't think this is, I wouldn't consider this traditional. I mean, there's a lot of variables here with this property, this is a big deal. I spoke with Supervisor Natale the other day, and, and we were just chatting about something, and Market Thing came up, and, you know, he said something that really kind of weighed on me heavily. And it's something I already knew, but it just, it just really kind of weighed on me coming from someone like him, and he said that this decision is the biggest thing that he can remember the city council voting on in his memory and maybe going forward. That was his words. That's, that's pretty heavy. So it's not something to rush into, and, and so one last thought, you know, here before we go on and maybe have public comment or let Councilman Campion speak is, is, you know, we're always told, well, this doesn't commit us to anything, this doesn't commit us to anything, we're not going to whatever. But this assembly bill, you know, even though it can have some language with your sunrise clause, and it could, you know, this doesn't happen by this, but the likelihood that this thing is not going to go forward is just not realistic. I mean, once this thing goes in motion, it's pretty much going to have it. And so whether or not Lewis Group, we work out something with Lewis Group, or something else, you know, once this is, this is a permanent thing. This is not just, oh, we'll just go back to status quo, this is a permanent thing. So whether or not this council approves something, or we do or don't by next June, you know, we have a 10-year, 10-year, and then we can approve another 10-year. So as sure as the sun's going to come up tomorrow, this property will be sold, it will be developed. And I, and I just, and I'm not trying to advocate for or against at this moment, I'm simply just saying you have to really understand what that means and the decisions that we make right now and the lasting repercussions that, that that has, good or bad. So that's it for now, I got some other things, but I'm going to wait to hear from the public and stuff.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I, you know, and I heard a lot of what the other councilmembers have said. I think it's important in evaluating this project and this proposed legislation and the actions that the city council takes, is that you look at it in a holistic approach. That being, you know, it's not just addressing 325 million dollars in sales tax leakage, it's looking at what could potentially fit in this community on that property that would help capture some of the sales tax that is being lost. It's not, it's not opening the floodgates for any type of development, it's actually looking at what is the best fit in this community and what would be best in terms of a long-term stable revenue. I, I don't think the answer is to delay it. We already know what the delay is, it's, you know, 1.2 to 1.0 to 1.2 million dollars annually in terms of deficit to the general fund. So the further this is delayed, the worse it will get in terms of being able to fund core central services for the city. We will exhaust revenues, or excuse me, exhaust reserves in less than five years. Then we're looking at, you know, catastrophic actions such as layoffs, such as quitting services. And I think, and that's not being said to scare anybody, that is the reality of it. If you don't have the revenue, you, you cannot provide those services. I think it's prudent for this council to evaluate this with open eyes and look at what is the potential here. You know, I don't know what it is, but I do know right now, under 3773, the only revenues that can be collected on that property are rents. That's the way it's written. In the new legislation, you're looking at rents, you're looking at property tax, you're looking at sales tax. So you have increased your revenue base potentially to increase revenues to provide monies to fund parks and recreation programs, which I believe is the underlying driving force to this entire effort. We're not looking at changing it, we're trying to improve it. At the same time, it improves, it decreases the reliance of the city's general fund on '06. So I think that, I think we have to look at it from a practical point of view and be open to, to change. Nobody really likes change, and I understand that, but, but you can't ignore it. You can't ignore a problem like this. It's systemic, and it won't go away. And I think it's incumbent upon this council to turn over every stone possible to address this concern. That's all.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for, just because I know that you have a great depth of knowledge with the operation of the city, being the assistant city manager and the other roles you've played in the city. I want to ask you a scenario, Kurt, I want you to just tell you, so if, if we just eliminated the market, like the market was just gone, that, that's just gone, and, and along with that, we no longer, I mean, nobody would dispute that we could afford a rec program, so let's just do away with those. So let's just say all the recs programs are gone, and anything associated with a recs program, so your sports fields, any property is where the sport's gone, softball field's gone, aquatic center no longer here, all that. So let's just say, for example, it's gone, or it never existed, I'm not saying get rid of it, I'm just saying, let's just say that it's not there. So we have no longer have parks of recreation at all, we no longer have sports programs at all, so now the city is no longer chipping in, you know, a million dollars to help with the '06 fund. So what's the net loss there? I mean, we still have landscaping, we still have, there's lots of things in the city that now would, the city would have to pay for. How would the city pay for those things? How would the city still pay for the other parks in the neighborhood? I mean, we're lighting landscapes in solvent, two of them are. So my question to you is, at the end of that, if that was the scenario, would the general fund still not be on the hook to pay for certain funding? And then I add that the '06 fund pays the general fund the tune of 850 to 900,000 dollars in essential service costs. So now there's a net loss of that amount because Parks and Rec doesn't exist, so they don't get that money. So at the end of it all, what do you think the net dollar figure is there? Just curious.
Well, you're talking about a non-reality. The reality is, we have the, we have the park land where revenues are generated. You're talking about a history in the city that goes back 50, 60 years, where the city is dependent upon a certain amount of revenue from, from the market grounds. It has grown to exist with that influx of revenue. So to say that, what would be the circumstance if we didn't have it? I can't tell you, because for 50 or 60 years, the city would not have relied on that source of revenue. So I don't know what the city would look like today. I don't know.
Oh, I did get some numbers from Claire, she's not here tonight, and it does show what some numbers, you know, would, would look like. The point I make is that, you know, you're talking about, well, we just can't fund core services. Really what this is about is that, it's not so much that the, I mean, the market has declined, we all acknowledge that, but what's really happened is that so much has been put on the plate of Parks and Rec, oh yeah, we're going to build another, here's another park, oh here's another, can you guys take care of this? Oh yeah, we're going to build this, can you guys take care of it? The plate has gotten so big for Parks and Recreation that they have to take care of, it's no longer, they can no longer do it. And I'm not, it's no fault of us, it's maybe no fault of the previous council, but, you know, responsibility goes back however long, but the point of it is, we've relied on that. So I swing around to talk about the market, you know, we, I'm happy to hear, I've been very happy to hear about the consulting, you know, coming in, looking at the market, trying to figure out what we can do to it. I mean, we should have done that 10 years ago or 15 years ago. You know, 2005 is where the graph started, we should have started doing it then. I'm glad to see that, but I would like to point out that the key, the key to solving this financial mess we're in absolutely lies squarely on the revitalization of the GALT market. Because if not, you can sell whatever property and develop whatever, and you can bring in $500,000 a year within the first couple of years on sales tax, property tax, or whatever, and you go, wow, now we're supplementing, we've got additional 500,000 in addition to the 1.4 million that Parks and Rec has. But if, if we do nothing with the market, if we don't solely make the market itself one of our main focuses, then it'll just be declining, and we'll be, that 500,000 will, in five years from now, we'll be right back to the same money we're in now, because it'll, the market will be making 900,000 instead of 1.4. So the point of it is, I like that that's incorporated in there, but I think, you know, we're, I think we're kind of more focused on the development to try to Band-Aid the situation where we're not looking at the actual problem itself and really trying to, we're talking, well, if the market doesn't work, well, whatever, you know, I think that should be the focus. That is the most important part of this, this, this plan that I see.
Well, I don't, I don't think that, that, that is what is, what they're looking at or what they're thinking about. I think that's all part of the planning process, Sean. I think in my mind, the market is incorporated in this plan. And in what you're saying in terms of, you know, what needs to be done to revitalize it, I think that's, that's just as important. And I think that needs to be evaluated as part of the plan.
Right.
So I don't disagree with you.
Which leads in our next comment, that revitalizing the market and doing those things, which we're talking about is so important, and we seem to agree on that that is important, could have been done under the current restrictions of 3773. We're only changing this legislation to do some other things, which puts me back where, again, we're putting the cart before the horse, and we're trying to change something that's forever, when we don't even know exactly what we want to do.
That's where I disagree, because I think it's an opportunity, and I think we need to explore the opportunity. I don't think that we should delay, because I can't, I have not heard a good reason to delay it. I have heard no good reason why we should put this on the back burner.
So, so you mentioned a minute ago that if we do nothing, and we don't, whatever, we don't do something now, that we're going to, you know, we'd be in major problems in four or five years. But yet we have verbiage in a bill that's going to allow us 10 years to develop it. What good's that going to do us? What good's 10-year? Or maybe we should just postpone it and make it another 10 and make it 20. How is that going to stem off the problem if we're going to allow a 10-year window?
Sean, just because it may not be solved as quickly as we'd like, doesn't mean we just shelve it and give up on it. I think you have to at least make an attempt. Who knows what, 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 what the day holds tomorrow or the next day or next year? We don't know.
Thank you. Now we can open for public comment. Any speaker?
The first one, Kami Martin. Good evening. Good evening, council and staff. First, I want to clarify something that I keep hearing over and over and read in tonight's agenda packet for this item. The Parks and Rec Department is not operating at a 1.2 to 1.4 million dollar deficit. Do we say that the Police Department is operating at a 6.2 million dollar deficit? What about Public Works with a million? Or Finance with 1.6? 6 million. And why is that? Because we budget for them in the general fund. Parks and Rec is the only department in the city that is not properly budgeted. Despite knowing for many years that the market will not, excuse me, that the market has not in the recent past, and will not cover all of the expenses of Parks and Recreation, nothing has done, I'm sorry, nothing has been done other than comparing, complaining about backfilling from the general fund. If approved by June 30th of next year, the city may sell, lease, or otherwise dispose of the real property consistent with the provisions of the GALT Market Community Plan, as it may be amended from time to time. This removes any acreage limitation on how much property can be sold or leased. Additionally, it will be amended by whom? Council? Mr. Sandu's earlier comments were spot on. We've been working on this for three years, yet we had to rush to get amended language. This bill was so urgent to get to the assembly so as to break the trust of this community, when there is seemingly no sense of urgency to actually progress with its development, given the language that allows 10 years with an additional 10-year extension, 20 years, 2041. That's just about another generation down the road. If our Parks and Rec Recreation Finances are as dire as they are being made out to be, this timeline is woefully inadequate. While there has been much talk about putting the cart before the horse, it would appear that staff has had a direction in which they want to drive this project. To note, what Chris said this evening about smart infill is the first that I've heard staff give any hint as to what a possible goal of this plan has been. staff give any hint as to what a possible goal of this plan has been. Next, I want to use this forum to express my disappointment with two of my elected officials, Assemblyman Jim Cooper and Senator Kathleen Galgiani. They clearly listened only to staff as well as to a member of council, and moved forward with this bill without any input from the city's residents. That being said, the way that I feel about their behavior pales in comparison to that of this council. Resident after resident stood at this podium and expressed their informed opinions regarding the amendment of AB 3773. They didn't blow smoke or complain baselessly, yet their cries fell on deaf ears. The citizens have been repeatedly told that if anything were to happen with the market grounds and surrounding properties, we would have input. While we provided input at the last council meeting, and instead we're told, well, you don't represent all of Galt. Now we're being told that we'll have input, but it'll be later at community meetings and in an online survey. Community meetings being held, mind you, to determine potential land uses when we don't, or when we haven't even attempted to amend our long-failed business plan, which, when considering tonight's presentation, we have no interest in doing. Last I checked, this is a Galt Market Community Plan, not a 3-2 council vote plan. Council should be unified in the decision on how to best project our city forward. This is the most important impactful project that the city has undertaken and will undertake for many years to come. Please consider what it is that you're voting on. Please read each document, word for word. If you have questions, ask and then independently confirm. We are trusting the five of you with the future of our Parks and Rec Department. I implore you each to think long and hard about this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Kami. Next speaker, please.
Harry Wenzel.
I'm just going to isolate a few things, you know, we got pretty wild tonight with all the plans and everything. First, I want to thank Kirk Campion for the meeting I had. He's obviously the senior, you know, councilperson, Tom Haglen, Amy Mendez, and Chris Oria's pros at what they do. Sean Farmer, I get to talk to him occasionally, and I'll circle around with some of this information that I put together. And Rich Lozano, and I took a walk through the market. So there's a lot of people doing a lot, but I'd like to go back to just a fundamental here tonight, and that is structural budget deficit. You're spending more money than you're taking in. And I think that we need to understand, you know, how that happens as a council. I don't think we, that anybody voted and said, okay, how many people are in favor of a structural budget deficit? Yet we did that, for instance, when we, when we did the raises, okay? And so I think that's something to think about. And another observation in this analysis I've done, which is no more than really just take the existing financial statements and budgets, and just rearrange them so you can see the components of Parks and Rec, and you could see it more clearly. And what's really, to me, what's really happening is that we're really hitting that, we're hitting that bump, that speed bump that you get when you have the structural budget deficit. And my research indicates, and I'll try and share that with all the council members, anybody that wants to just come by, I'll give you my, you know, my contact information. But what's really happened over the last 10 years for Parks and Recreation is that they actually do run at, they actually do have more revenue than they have expenses. And then the balance of that revenue then goes towards the overhead charge, you know, for central services. And then the general fund eats the rest of it, really, they do. They've been supporting Parks and Recreation. So I would say, a good example of this is, every year for about the last 10 years, there was this net revenue before the allocation of overhead. Overhead exists, you're not going to get rid of it, it's real money, okay? And one of the ways out, I suppose, is to get the Galt market going right. And that's one, I think, a lot of citizens that I talk to, they're very interested in that, okay? But you do have that structural budget deficit, you might have to tax, you might have to cut. I don't know that you can really expect it all out of the Galt market. And what we've got coming up, based on the projection for the 2019 budget, when we see the final figures on that, is we've got, compared to the $401,000 of net revenue that Recreation Department had, we've actually got a minus $286,000. They sound small, but you have to, you actually have to add those together, because that's how far you've gone behind. And so, all of these, all of these years, you suddenly are looking at this $640,000 deficit, that the general fund is going to have to make that up, okay? But what's interesting about all of this is that, of that $640,000, really, that's based on the projected revenue decrease at the market of $125,000, okay? The biggest part of it is really in the salaries. It's about $357,000. Now, I don't want to bore everybody with the figures, and I have been trying to meet with the councilmen, and I appreciate it. They really do listen, and I know Paul, you and I, you know, just kind of said hi, and I said, I got, you know, more, and Sean, I wanted to circle around to you, because I want to, you know, see all the councilmen and just share it too, because you've been kind of my go-to guy. But I do want to say that, I mean, I like all the plans and everything, they got to get paid for, and they may be the answer, but I think at the very base level for our city council, you know, we need to ask the question, does this do something to us, like structural deficit, or whatever? And I just wanted to bring that up tonight, and thank again, it was a wonderful meeting with Amy Mendez, I don't think we meant to go down that analysis road. Tom was a real pro, I really appreciated the discussion, and Chris and Amy are great. And I just hope that if, you know, if any of our fellow citizens are watching, then they need to get involved, they need to learn about all of this, learn about the government, you know, navigate their way around the financial statements. But it's a very tough project, and I love the lively debate that everybody has. I think that's how you're eventually going to get to what you need, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wenzel.
I just have a quick comment. I think that if my colleagues have the opportunity to meet with Harry out at the market, he should definitely take advantage of that. He's, has a lot of institutional knowledge with vendors, and it was very enlightening. So thank you, Harry, for having me out there.
Chris Brosman.
Good evening, councils, thank you again for allowing us all to speak. One of the things I heard a lot about tonight was sales tax leakage. I heard Lodi is really, really good. Well, I just looked at those numbers, and they're not really, really good. They're $174 per citizen on Lodi. At Galt, $96 per citizen. Do the math, it's $78 difference, right? Take a population of 25,000 roughly in Galt, you got $1.9 million, so I don't know where 3.25 come from, but that's 2018 stats, that is on the state comptroller's website. I don't like smoke, so I'd wanted to point that one out. Other than that, really wanted to touch base, I was really kind of mixed on coming out tonight, to be honest with you. Heard this young lady speak earlier, and I have to say, I felt like the last meeting, that the citizens, I've been going to meetings now for two years, guys, about this, since we started having budget problems, right? Citizens weren't heard, they were heard. But the agenda was already set before this meeting, before the citizens got up and spoke to you. I'm not adverse to AB 3220, but as I've spoken in the past, I am adverse to a blank checkbook to you, five council members. I want any, I would love to see a resolution, guys, from all five of you, and that would limit this council and future councils, that any sale of an asset over $100,000 is going to have to go to public vote. Let's have the citizens really vote. You know, I've been going to open meetings for two years of plans. Everyone I go to, I'm going to tell you, 60% at least of the people that I get up and speak are against it. But we're not being heard. It's not, again, that I'm adverse to using the property to a better manner, but I am adverse to selling assets at most times. And if I think we'd go to selling assets, we really need to sell them. Something that was interesting, Chris, you said is the schools were on board with this, and yet, I saw something posted on Facebook, which, not a great misadvertising, but it seemed like it was true, that the school board is unaware that they're even thinking about selling the property. And that was according to the chairperson of the board of the school. So I'm not sure where the lack of communication's going there, but that's kind of interesting in my mind, that we get two different things. One of the things that came up, and this is not related to the city, selling property or not, but cost of hacking. It was brought up that we had insurance when we were hacked and our systems went down, yet in the Lodi paper, it said it was going to be the cost of it, it was going to be something about $680,000 to the city of Galt. Do we have insurance, or don't we have insurance for that hacking incident? You know, I'm here in general fund, I'm here in general fund, I'm here in cutbacks, and I like the gentleman that spoke before me. But we're still hiring people. You know, most businesses, I know, when you're losing money, you don't continue hiring people. We're talking layoffs possibly in the future. Rather than laying off, maybe we need to cut some services back, maybe we need to not hire people, maybe we need to go to contracting and let somebody else do that work, i.e. what we did with landscaping to an extent, but there's other pieces or other venues to go, other than adding to the payroll, guys, when we're in the red. And thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Brosman. Thank you. Next speaker.
I don't have me on this subject.
Yeah, come to the podium, please, and, is your name?
My name's Jeff Hood, longtime resident of Galt. I just wanted to speak in favor of the item before the council tonight. I think it's necessary for the city to take measures such as these. I'm speaking in support of Parks and Recreation. I just retired after eight years as a Park and Recreation Director for a city nearby, and I understand the struggles that Parks and Recreation agencies are facing. City of Manteca recently backfilled their department by $425,000 simply to account for the increase in minimum wage. Minimum wage and paid benefits for part-time employees is up 83% in about seven or eight years. It is very, very difficult for Parks and Recreation agencies to make ends meet. In addition to part-time costs, full-time costs have increased dramatically. I just recently retired, so I've been looking at the numbers here a little bit closer. I'm very concerned that there aren't sufficient funds for capital maintenance, such as the Aquatic Center, the ball fields. I really think that it is time for the council to support AB 2220 as proposed by staff. Well, thank staff and the council for taking this on. This is, this is important to do this now. Waiting any longer is going to put the general fund, as well as Parks and Recreation, in greater financial danger. I think if you do not do something like this, essentially, you will be then asking the residents to pay higher taxes, or you will be eliminating significant services to the community. So I think that's about all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Hood, I have a question for you. So we spoke, I think you emailed me, or we spoke on social media, so you were the Parks and Rec Director for Lodi.
That's correct.
Right. So what was the Parks and Rec budget for Lodi? Is it like, it's like 8 million, I think?
About 6.5.
6.5. And out of that 6.5, how much do the actual programs and all that recoup didn't pay towards that?
Lodi is at 43% cost recovery, it's a very high percentage. The national average is about 28%.
Okay, so 43, so 43, so basically 57, 57% of the funds that cover Parks and Recreation come from?
Taxes.
Which is from what fund?
General fund.
Okay. Thank you for your answer.
Thank you.
Jay Vandenberg.
Hi, my name's Jay Vandenberg. I understand we can ask Lewis Group questions? So, yes or no?
Yeah, we can ask.
Okay, so how long, from this point where we stand, what can the citizens expect as a timeline for something to get destroyed and starts to be built? What's typical, I'm not, you know, what's stereotypical?
In fact, I would just suggest that you give your questions, so you don't
Okay.
Use your five minutes, and then they can call, the mayor may call up
Okay.
Lewis Group to answer your questions.
To the gentleman's last point, I think the citizens' large frustration is that he's saying what has exactly happened in the past, that the citizens have and will pay again if the city isn't running their city correctly, instead of the staff or anybody in the city taking the punishment. We lost our water, they're saying we're going to have to cut services instead of cutting staff. You guys keep everything, we lose everything, and we're paying you. That's just not, you know, it's like kicking us when we're down. So, she brought up a great point about revenue, but in order to generate that kind of revenue, we won't be a bedroom community, and that's what Sean's trying to protect. Mr. Campion is simply trying to be proactive, which is not necessarily bad, but the citizens are just scared of a non-plan, it's just that simple. And, you know, I emailed Lewis Group, and they came back about, they're willing to do this project, not necessarily purchasing the land. Well, if you were to remove that one word, sale of property, those few words, sale of property, I think a lot of the citizens might warm up to what's going on, but every time we take a step, it's about selling our assets, it's about us taking the hit and not the city, you know, it's, it benefits us, not the other way around. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jay. Or councilmember, anybody have anything, or Jeff, you want to come to the podium and say something, or the answer, or his question?
Can I ask real quick, Ms. Mendez? Mr. Brosman brought up a point about 3.25 million of sales tax leakage, and then he talked about the difference between sales tax generation between Lodi and here, and why are those numbers different?
That 3.25 number, the 325 million, is leakage everywhere, outside of Galt, so not just Lodi. That leakage can be anywhere people spend money outside of the community, so that's where that 3.25 million number comes from.
But it's still safe to say that we are bringing in about one, I forgot the number that he said, 1.25 million less than Lodi per capita, when you look at it from per-capita perspective?
I would have to look to see what that number is. We, you know, we have a graph that we get, and we can go through, and, you know, we can analyze those numbers and put that together, but I don't know it off the top of my head. I just know that they are significantly higher per capita than, you know, than Galt is.
And I don't want to get hung up on sales tax leakage, you brought it up, and I just had a clarifying question earlier about what, whether that was annually, or in what time period it was, so, but, thank you, and...
Rich, just to answer your question, I did some research on this, actually, about 18 months ago, and the figure that I got was from the state comptroller, yeah, it was like, it was like $5,000 per citizen.
It was like, it was like $5,000 per citizen in Galt and 15,000 in Lodi. So they're spending about, so the citizens of Lodi are spending about three times as much within their own community as Galt.
Or people are spending that much more money in Lodi than anywhere.
It was more about, it was per capita, like what the citizens per capita spend within their community, so.
No.
Right. The per capita in Galt is about $97 per capita.
So the sales tax leakage you speak of too, you said anywhere outside of Galt, right? So like, people could like be traveling on vacation and spend money elsewhere, something we would never provide for them.
Correct.
There's a difference between leakage and the amount of sales tax captured. They're two different things. And so the, you know, if the Lodi, and I'm saying if because I'd want to verify on the state controller's website, but if Lodi is 174, and if Galt is $97 per capita, then when you do subtract 97 from 174, and then multiply it by 26,000, the population of Galt, that would be an unrealized amount of $2 million. So if we had the same, another way to express it is that if we had the same sales tax capture, $174 per capita as Lodi, our sales tax would be $2 million higher.
Right. Got it. Okay, thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeb Elmore with Lewis Plan Communities, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, and thank you for hearing this item and this presentation. Also like to thank staff, they've been great to work with through this process and taking the lead, certainly, and we have been more, like I said in an earlier email to Mr. Jay over there that made the comment earlier, we're taking more of an advisory role, but certainly our interest persists in effectively doing some portion, if not all, the development on the property. You know, one thing I did want to, hearing a lot of the discussion and debate tonight with regards, I do want to point back to a statement that was made by Councilman Farmer, if it makes sense. You know, that's a very important statement to make. I mean, this whole thing has to make sense. And right now, I, and I don't believe the staff right now, can tell anybody in this room without doing a lot more analysis and effort and going through this community plan process, and affecting legislative changes perhaps, if it's going to make sense. Without legislative changes, certainly, we know it doesn't make sense. Certainly referring back to a slide in the community presentation, on slide four of the presentation, it was a gross revenue showing the declining gross revenue. I mean, we're not here today necessarily because this property is available or an opportunity. We're here, and the city recruited us because there's a recognition of a problem, and that's an economic problem, to go towards very basic services and important services, especially in the parks programs. And something Councilman Campion stated a moment earlier today as well is, you know, it's really a proactive approach. We see it, I mean, we're not here to drive any specific angles, as the city manager stated, if nothing is the option, that's okay too. We want to try to advance something and explore other options for development. But as those revenue graphs decline, you know, eventually, and of course, what was not included in there was this net revenue slide, or when costs are offset and costs are increasing, so we can't just look at revenue in isolation either. And eventually, that money's going to run out. So while we look at the charts and say, well, there's a revenue source today, I believe the city, at least the staff in my conversations, are looking at what's gonna happen tomorrow when that revenue is at zero, and the general fund is the sole source of handling parks and rec programs, and then eventually that general fund depletion happens, the reserves are gone, and suddenly you're in a hole. And I guess the importance of, do you want to make the decision today, while there's still a sustainable source of revenue, or do you want to make the decision when your backs are potentially gonna be up the wall when there's no revenue? That's not a threat to me, it's just reality. I'm an outsider. Like I said, if something happens, great. If nothing happens, too bad for me, but, you know, if that's better for the city, that's better for all of us. So I just want to make some important points. And one thing that's, that I'm struggling with, and I hear that if we answer to this, or if we decide on this tonight or another time, we're executing a plan tomorrow, and then the Galt market goes away. That's not the premise here at all. What I view it as, and I realize that I'm an outsider with an interest perhaps, is this is the creation of flexibility for the city to make decisions going forward. Right now, you have no flexibility of the city on this property. And what this AB 220 or 2220 states is it provides the council and provides the city with flexibility to consider options for the property, even if it's not affected today, it can be affected tomorrow. And those 10-year plus 10-year extensions, I think, are the flexibilities that you guys are gonna want, based upon what I see as a declining revenue source. Things may change in the market. Suddenly, that type of retail may become desirable again. We, as retail experts, do not believe it will. So we see that that declining revenue is gonna persist, and again, we're here to affect a problem, not just chasing another opportunity or property. So that's why we're engaged with the city and working on. So now I'll answer the gentleman's question. Obviously entitlements of this nature, obviously stirring off of a community plan that may be adopted, probably a sequo process is a 12 to 18-month process, and then constructing infrastructure and buildings is probably another 24 to 36 months, but a lot of that would happen on the front end of that time period. So we're probably looking at a two-year process to actually see site construction going on with full entitlements of a full plan, once we're actually started and have submitted a development application. That's a very reasonable timeframe, I believe, in the city and elsewhere around. So that was the answer to, hopefully I've answered the question there. And with regards to sale and lease, you know, obviously, we understand the city would be concerned about selling public property, we totally get that. And there are occasions where we can enter into lease agreements. They would have to be long-term leases, and they would, of course, have to be for uses that also are leasable facilities, like multifamily, like retail. But obviously, if any consideration for for sale residential is occurring, that would be a fee titled sale to an end user, and therefore, there would need to be a land purchase. But whether we're purchasing that site or facilitating the sale directly to the city to future residents, that could also be an option. I mean, I mentioned flexibility for you. Well, one thing that we like to promote ourselves off from not only acquisition, but development scenarios and multi-discipline development scenarios, is that we are very flexible as a company. We don't answer to financiers, we don't answer to lenders, we don't answer to Wall Street. We make our own decisions. The family that owns and runs the company makes their own decisions. So again, that's why we hopefully are seen as a very good partner to the city in that light. So anyways, happy to answer any more questions. Hopefully I've addressed the gentleman's question and any others you have tonight. Thank you, Thomas, for having me.
Yeah, I have questions. First, thank you for being here tonight, because I think it's important that you answer questions. Some of these questions are really gonna either, you know, set things misinformation to rest, or enlighten the public, which clearly at this point feel very much in the dark. So I think it's important that we try to move away from that. So thank you for clarifying the sale versus lease. I know that it's not your preference, but you did mention that you're flexible in that. So touching on that topic exactly, you mentioned that obviously a lease scenario doesn't work for you in a situation where you are gonna develop something that you in turn are gonna sell, because then you couldn't do that. But instead, if you were to do like, you know, multi-residential apartment complex with like some retail and stuff, whatever, and you lease out those spaces to retail and, you know, restaurant or shopping or whatever, then a lease in that scenario would be viable. Am I saying that correct?
Yeah, I mean, certain, great, great question. I mean, certain retail users, and we want to make sure we don't narrow the field too much to at least expose the city to all options on this property, whether or not the city and we choose which ones are good or bad, in the event we are lucky to do that. But absolutely, I mean, there are certain retailers that will absolutely demand to own their parcels, so it's really gonna be a decision at that point in time. The importance of that land formally or firmly being conveyed to Lewis as a company is less important, but certainly to the end user, that could be more important. I would say most retailers do prefer leasing, but I would say, you know, 30% of them do want to own property.
So my next question is, I know you only speak on behalf of Lewis Group. I mean, you know, if the city of Galt and the community and the council do not come to an agreement that works for Lewis Group and part ways, you know, in two or three years, within that 10-year window or 20-year window, whatever, another developer could come along and be talking with them. But just on behalf of Lewis Group, from your perspective, I did see your correspondence email where you answered those questions, and I appreciate that information. I just kinda want just really kind of straight yes or no answers, instead of like, you know, vague stuff. So realistically, is the Lewis Group, I mean, ideally, is the Lewis Group gonna be interested in coming to the table for any development less than, say, 10 acres?
Well, the answer is yes, but certainly, when we talk about size, we have to look at making sure that we can cover adequate costs associated with the development. So if there is not a lot of infrastructure demand for the property, then that allows us to certainly examine much smaller developments. I would certainly, bless you, I would certainly hinder back to a development we did in downtown Sacramento. It was on eight acres with 117 units, you know. So obviously, doing developments on parcels less than 10 acres, absolutely fine, especially on infill properties that typically don't have those major infrastructure triggers. So the answer is, if there was a 10-acre development, yes, we pursue, are actively pursuing other 10-acre developments. But to be honest, you know, you asked for a straight answer, I would say if that got reduced to probably three, four, five, six acres, that's when we probably would struggle as a company with that type of investment. That does not fit the investment criteria that our company typically has.
Okay. Next question. Can you define for the public a little bit more on public-private partnerships? That phrase has been used a lot. And, and, you know, then people say, well, to sell property, what kind of partnership? I mean, to sell someone a piece of land and then charge them development fees and whatever goes along with that, and then after that, charge them property tax, that doesn't really make, you know, them a partner. So explain, give me an example of a public-private partnership. What does that mean?
Absolutely. Well, obviously, it means a lot of different things, and I mentioned our flexible arrangements of how we can approach properties. We've done some public-private partnerships where we've purchased property as is. We've done a couple of those here in the last three years in Northern California. There's another one, for instance, in the city of Vallejo, where we're working on a golf course project to redevelop it, where we've actually entered into a purchase and sale agreement to purchase subject to a value based upon the entitlement value, such that the city of Vallejo, in this case, can recognize the increased value from us procuring entitlements for the property, because obviously, as raw land versus entitled land, there is a very big disparity in land value there. So that was a way for the city to capture kind of the upside, but not be obligated to approve anything. And then more recently, of course, just having approved, I think, two weeks ago, we're in a joint venture with the county to redevelop about 3,500 lots in the old Mather Air Force Base up in Sacramento. So my point here is it can happen in a lot of different ways, but there are some very common components with public-private partnerships, which the word was touched upon tonight, in its transparency. I mean, obviously, we're investing dollars, we're investing our time, we're putting risk on those dollars, and we want a reasonable return. But the good news here is that return's gonna be face out for the city and the city council to ultimately determine, such that we're not, you know, going to walk out of here with big bags of money, without the city absolutely knowing every dollar that's going into the project and going out of the project. And again, there was a financial perform in one of the slides that was mentioned, that effectively is how we're going to evaluate. So going back to the if it makes sense, what we anticipate with the development of the community plans is having a series of financial models to review with each one of those varying, variable plans, so we can all decide, okay, does it actually work? So it doesn't stay on paper, is my famous phrase, right? So, you know, and how we can get that off the ground to make sure it does make sense. Again, because of the flexible nature and the private nature of our company, the public-private partnership, it has to be a partnership, and it has to be transparent. And if it has those two things, we're such a flexible company, we can operate in many different, you know, caveats with regards to acquisition scenarios and structures.
But give us a specific example of a revenue stream, because I mean, to sell property and then be able to get the sales tax or the property tax off of that development, that's one thing, but where, beyond that, where's the real revenues? Because you just mentioned, you know, that you're not gonna walk out with a bag of money. I'm not concerned with Lewis Group walking away with a bag of money. I'm more concerned with the city just getting handed a big bag of money and then blowing it.
Absolutely.
That's what I'm more concerned about.
Understood. I mean, the AB 2220, or triple 20, however you want to phrase that, does require that this money does remain reinvested back into the parks and rec program. So there is some protections on the revenue that are generated, the site, if the new legislation is adopted. Certainly, that's the case now, but no development can occur to generate those.
But that's revenue on property taxes and things, right?
Well, that's, but sales taxes, property taxes, any sale of property, of course. And there's other assessment districts, transfer taxes, other types of assessments that we've talked to your staff about for additional revenue creation. But you certainly, I don't want to dismiss the fact, you've certainly touched upon the key components of sustainable revenue sources from this property, which are absolutely gonna be sales taxes and property taxes to the city.
Yeah, because to be honest, when you talk about sustainable, you know, we're talking about, let's come up with a sustainable revenue source contrary to a Galt market, which is a retail establishment, which can fluctuate with the economy. Well, retail and building all that, you know, sales tax dollars, I mean, that's gonna fluctuate with the economy too. I mean, you could, you could have another recession and have every retail spot that we build on this property sit vacant, and we're not getting anything from it except the property tax, and then, you know, you could have bank repossession on the property. So there's no 100% guarantee on the revenue stream. When I talk about revenue stream, I'm talking about like, we just approved a billboard a while back where we were guaranteed X amount of dollars. Like, let us build this billboard, you're gonna get X amount of dollars. I wasn't a fan of billboards, but I approved it because there was a guarantee involved with that. When I think about partnerships, I think about like, you know, we have the land, you have the money to develop, you know, there's a joint effort, and then there's like a, you know, 80/20 split on revenues from that, you know, any money generated, that's what I consider partnership. I'm still struggling with the, I sell a property and then I'm a partner kind of thing. So, you know, and I'm not, I'm not a, you know, development expert, so I'm just, but that's kind of the way I'm looking at it, and I think a lot of the citizens are kind of looking at it that way too. They're like, where is that revenue stream, you know, other than just sales tax and property tax? I mean, property tax is really only the solid one there, for the most part, and sales tax is kind of like just speculative how things are gonna do.
Yeah, a couple of points there. First, on the sustainability of revenue, and I mean, what we know today, or what, I guess I shouldn't say I know, but what the data shows us today is that there is not a sustainable source of revenue on this property today. So obviously, in the creation of retail models, of which we hope to own for the long term, or own with the city perhaps, and I'll get to that in a moment, how that could work, obviously, we're gonna seek what the market wants, we're gonna work with users. You're right, there's no way to guarantee retail revenue. It fluctuates with the market somewhat, but assessing what the current market demands are, and at least providing, and I could never guarantee anything, but at least providing a several decade-out kind of environment of retail, will at least kind of prove out some certainty with a sustainable source of revenue from that. But what, again, going back to the graphics, we know today that it is not a sustain, we don't, I don't believe it's a sustainable source of revenue as it currently sits today. So, but there is no guarantee here, there's no defense of that necessarily, but through smart planning, putting the right users in place, certainly, that's the best attempt to maximize the revenue on the property that go back to the parks and rec system. To answer the other question, again, I mean, obviously, our preference is, is the company is always to buy property because we appreciate having the control, but we recognize the situation when here. There's nothing preventing us as a city and developer or company from doing a joint venture together, where the city does retain either long-term ownership, long-term benefits that may occur from ownership of property or leasing property. So these are scenarios we can contemplate, but always remember to look at the other side. If you're a partner on the front side, you're gonna be a partner on the backside if things go back, so the city would be assuming risks associated with that. And we can spell all that out and look at all those scenarios, if we're afforded, again, the opportunity to do such. So just need to weigh the cost benefits and everything and the risk associated with it, which is how you'll be basically becoming a developer, and that's how we'll kind of open the book and show you how we analyze those things.
Yeah, so that's my last question for you. I just wanted to say a statement that while you're up there is, you know, I'm just a small-town guy. I own a small business, couple of businesses here in town. But to me, when you look at something like the Galt market, it's sitting on roughly 12 or 13 acres, I think is the core, what the market operates on, you know, even declining revenue, 1.4 million is nothing to sneeze at. So I just want to throw that out there. I keep hearing, it really kind of jabs at me, I keep hearing it over and over, that like, you know, market this, market that, fail this, fail that, fail that. You know, one thing I was taught growing up is if in your mind you think something's gonna fail, you will fail. And I think we need to change the mindset, it's like, we can't just like, oh, the market's going downhill, we need to, whatever. You need to be positive-minded and think positively. If you want a successful outcome, you need to think success. And so, thank you for your time, I appreciate you being here tonight. I don't know if anybody else has a question for you, but...
I do. Yeah. I have a couple of questions, and they center around what Sean asked about, the public-private partnership. We have an existing business that the city runs called The Market that brings in quite a bit of money. Have you had any successful projects, anywhere, your company, where an existing business has been included in? And what does, what does that look like? And then I'll ask the second part of that, is has it been with a government agency?
Well, having been with the company for nine years, and us recently engaging in probably a handful of public-private partnerships in the Northern California region, which I should really only appropriately speak of, I would probably answer the question that's akin to this one perhaps, is the golf course project I mentioned in Vallejo. Two 36-hole golf courses failing, can't cover costs, can't cover deferred improvements, such that the golf courses are at risk of closing, because of declining revenue, starting to sound a little familiar. So our approach to that one is to actually revitalize one of the golf courses by building a brand-new golf course and building a brand-new clubhouse, and giving those products to the city of Vallejo to use, to own, to lease, to make revenue from, and then in turn for us developing a portion of the property to generate the monies necessary... us developing a portion of the property to generate the monies necessary to facilitate the renovations of that golf course and clubhouse. So, that's, I think, a great example in correlation to the program here. One of, one of you stated earlier that maybe we'll see some revitalization of the market. Well, that happens usually through private funding sources, which can only occur if there's private revenue being generated, which, of course, in this case, would likely come through development. So, that's certainly a scenario where you have a failing business enterprise that's, has a, really a clubhouse that's ready to fall down, that's going to get a brand-new public facility that they can, then, to them, a sustainable source of revenue. So, I would probably highlight that project as being very similar. Of course, it's still in the planning stages, but at least the concept is something that another public agency has definitely agreed to.
And, and I appreciate that, that offer of an example. One, another question I have is, I mean, certainly, our market is not a golf course, but it does bring in revenue at a certain level. And I, I think I said this a couple of meetings ago, that not only with all, you know, the caveat that all the revenues have to continue to maintain Parks and Recreation, but the other piece of this is that the market is, as you heard tonight, what Galt is known for. And so, I don't know that tearing half of it down and redeveloping it is the right, I don't know what the right answer is, but I think, at least moving forward, to have in our minds that, that is a source of income, and we would be foolish to just not have it anymore, or not have a, a strong variation of it. And so, have you done anything with, like, outdoor entertainment areas, or, or, because that's how I kind of see the market, is the market on, as it stands now, a couple days a week, maybe a third day on a weekend? But, maybe, I know we've used it for carnivals, we've used it for, you know, community events, things like that. Have you done anything like that?
I wouldn't say, in a public setting, have we attempted to recreate, revise, or update an existing market-type feature. I guess how I'd respond to that is, and Amy brought this up earlier, is the quality of a lifestyle component in retail centers. Our company's done a little over 19 million square feet of retail office and industrial, so, while I may not have all the expertise, we certainly have it on staff. In that, those lifestyle components, what they absolutely require are for ancillary facilities that support more than just someone shopping, but someone taking a break, someone having their kids play at something. So, we certainly have integrated uses such as that from a lifestyle perspective on our retail projects to maintain, I guess, some facilities that would be akin to maybe some things that we'd like to build and put to support the market, but I certainly couldn't suggest that we have done anything similar to actually revitalizing the market. But, that's also not our role here. I mean, obviously, the city's hiring experts and, and, you know, the Portland folks, anyways, I can't remember her name, but, obviously, others, other experts that the city's bringing through the grants that have been offered to the city and secured by the city, those will be the experts that we'll listen to, just as hopefully you guys will.
Okay. And that's, you know, that's one of the things I heard last week when I was walking with Harry out at The Market, is, you know, there is some desire, or at least, certainly, some of the vendors talked about, some of our other competitors, and I don't even know if you call them competitors, because they are open other days of the week, but they brought in some kind of entertainment piece, whether it's for kids or whatever. So, I just wanted to see, at least from your lens, and I know you won't be making those decisions, but from your lens, if you've had any experience with that, so, thank you.
Other than that, and, and just if I may, to respond to one more thing you said, I mean, you said, "Well, we don't know, and I don't know." I mean, I cannot stand here today and say, "I know, I know it all," because this is why we need to, or not we, but this is why I believe it's a good idea to begin the exploration process with more detail, bring more definition to what this property can be, to give everybody the opportunity to understand what it can be, and therefore, make an educated decision on what's best for the city, which may be yes and maybe no, that's fine, but we don't know enough right now, in my opinion. And I think the work and the efforts and the, the actions that the city and we would like to take on this property to explore that can bring a definition to, here's what it looks like. We may conclude it works, we may conclude it doesn't work, you may like what we have, you may not like what we have, and the city has, the city staff has, in this case. And that's the whole point of this exercise, is, in my opinion, is to create the flexibility, give you options, and allow us to do something that provides you options to consider.
Thank you.
Jeff, I have one question. You know, you working with the, as a city for a while about the property, and you exactly know that about the property, right? Their property on, and that Bell AB 20 to 20, they say is sale. If hypothetically, we take them off that to sale just only lease, what your mind will be? You still, can be that same interest, or you, as a developer, or your interest can be less than as buying the property?
Again, it's all about flexibility that the city wants to preserve on the site. Obviously, as I mentioned earlier, there are certain land uses that set up reasonably well for leased opportunities or land leases on property, which would need to be long-term, in this case, because people are building structures and need to get that return and whatnot, obviously. But, I would, I believe the city council would be remiss to get, get rid of the sale concept, just again, to preserve flexibility. I mean, I appreciate the sensitivity with that subject, and that's a very good question, but, again, to me, if I was sitting in your chair, or your chairs, or one of them, preserving flexibility for the city seems to be the most prominent, you know, key factor, I should say, in, in this exercise. Obviously, if there was no sale option, that would potentially restrict the kinds of land uses that we could consider developing on the property, I would never say that we would immediately evacuate the premise and, and leave town because of the sale versus lease, but I will certainly tell you that only allowing leases on this property will be highly restrictive to our ability to come up with sensible ideas to afford any sort of economic result that I believe the city would be happy with.
Yeah. You know, the next question is, if, for example, we moving forward, nor the selling the property, because a lot of citizen very panic on that subject when you're selling the property, because their property you gave to the city, is very important for the city, what citizen wants. But, if there is, is like in lease, what, what kind of lease? Is it kind of thing, you buy the property, as a city have a lump sum lease as a yearly, and then, you take care of whatever sub-lease you can give to any tenant apartment complex or any business?
It, it could be facilitated with a direct city-to-end-user lease, or it could be facilitated as a, kind of a dual lease, where we're leasing the property, the city, and in turn, leasing the property to an end-user, but certainly with the city's consent to do so. So, if, if that was your question, I hope I captured it, but, obviously, you know, those are the types of lease arrangements that could be conducted likely on this property.
Yeah, thank you. And the last question is, I'm piggyback with the council member Farmer, he asked 10 acres. And I know you give the example, you have in Sacramento 10 acres. But, it also depend upon the location, too. And that location, I don't know what the location is, is it 10 acre? If that 10 acre, we want to sell it, are you willing to involve that, or you might, we can say no?
I, I'm sorry, so, what was the, what was the question?
My question is, earlier, you said you are willing to buy 10 acre, even we want to sell a 10 acre. And you said, there is examples, you guys working somewhere in Sacramento, but it also depend upon the location, too. On this property, you already know this property. If their property, we can just sell only 10 acre, are you willing to move with us, or is not going to be fit?
Yes. A 10 acres of available property in either a sale or leased fashion gives us enough reason to stay here at the table and work with the city on the project.
Thank you.
May I address council? Yeah?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. I just want to, you know, Councilman Farmer, you talked about giving up on the market and things like that, and I want to assure all of you that we haven't given up on, we haven't given up on the market, okay? But, the way the market is designed right now, it's just not, we, we need to change some things, and this gives us a good opportunity to make some changes, to make it more conducive to weekend events. The market's too big, the way it's designed currently to house what we have, and we can downsize. And when we downsize, we'll, we'll also have to make some shifts in some areas that we construct, you know, indoor facilities, shaded facilities, things like that, that can attract weekend events. So, I, I want you to know that I assure you that we have not given up on that market. And every meeting that I've attended, we have never talked about giving up on that market and getting rid of that property. It may not be in the same location it is today, but we have never talked about giving up that market. So, I, I just want to make sure you guys...
Well, I appreciate that, Armando, I do. And, and I'm not implying that you're giving up. I know that you and Jackie and, and your staff are working hard for new things and new ideas constantly. I see things advertised such, I just, I was just referring to the language where I feel like, I mean, basically, I think what people need to remember is, you know, everybody seems to be very focused on this money, whatever we do with this, is the money going to Parks and Recreation. And I don't think that any of us up here are going to disagree on that. I think that's the one thing that we all can probably very much disagree, that whatever happens, the money needs to continue to support Parks and Recreation. But, the other part of this is that this gift of land in the beginning was for the use of Parks and Recreation for the community, and that's the part we're trying to change. And, and I get that we need to do something. I don't doubt that. But, I'd like to hear that there's flexible options. I feel like we're only putting ourselves into, into, painting ourselves into one option here, and we're not being flexible with, with saying, "Look, well, where's the compromise?" The city, the, the community maybe doesn't want to sell the property. I mean, this, this, this property doesn't belong to me. It doesn't belong to you. It doesn't belong to any of us up here. It doesn't belong to the city. It belongs to the community of Galt. The people of Galt are the ones that own that property. They're the biggest stakeholder. I keep hearing this word stakeholder, well, someone's the stakeholder. They're the biggest stakeholders. And I heard 12 of those stakeholders, last meeting, voiced their opinion about the sale of that property and not rushing into something. They weren't saying no to everything, they were just saying, "Let's step back and kind of breathe a little bit," and basically felt like they were just not listened to. So, I appreciate that, and I, and I, I know you understand the importance of that, but I just, again, it's, it's all about this property and doing something that we cannot take back once this is done. I, I think, you know, Kurt will say, "Well, we need to keep our options open," or whatever, but, you know, there's a lot of verbiage in here. I think there's a lot of compromise that can be made. I'm just upset still that the fact that we, you know, we're like having these public meetings, and, you know, we're, it's like, you know, "We want to hear what the public has to say." Well, they didn't want, you know, we didn't, nobody cared what the public said last meeting. You know, if I go to my wife and say, "We're going to go out to eat tonight, what do you want?" And I say, "I want Mexican food," and she says, "Well, I want Chinese food," and we argue about it, and then I drive to the Mexican food restaurant, and I go, "All right, honey, what do you want on the menu?" She doesn't look at me and go, "I didn't want Mexican food."
Sleeping on the couch.
Yeah. So, the point of it is, you know, you're now asking for the community, "Well, what do you think?" When the community said, "Now, you're asking me what I want?" It's like, the community feels that we're only want their input as long as it aligns with what the city wants.
Sean, I don't mean to dismiss the 12, the 12 speakers that spoke, but, you know, there's a whole lot of other people out there that stay home because either they're satisfied or disinterested. So, I, I can't take, you know, 12 people that have an adamant position one way and call that public opinion, Galt's public opinion. I think you have to look at other factors in, in coming to a decision.
And, and that's truly how I, how I think. You will have some people who are opposed to things, some that are in favor of it. You find fewer people at public meetings supporting something than you do having people opposed. You've put out a, a public hearing notice for a new subdivision in a vacant field where the guy has a, a metal fence in his backyard see-through, because, so he can enjoy the scenery, and then he gets a notice that someone's going to build houses there. I could tell you, that entire neighborhood shows up, and they say, "No, we don't want that development." Well, the, the property owner who owns it, he's been planning to build there for some period of time, maybe it took time. But, but you end up getting people out when you see opposition more often than when you see people in favor.
I don't disagree with you, but to tell me that 12 people don't represent the community, and you can have a community meeting on March 9th and have maybe 25 or 30 people there, and at those 30...
It's difficult.
If those 30 people are in opposition, you say, "Well, that's only 30 people, that doesn't represent the people of the community." You had people that were business owners, ex-council members. We had someone like Ms. Barbara Payne out there, who served on the council for 12 years. I mean, I was getting emails, people were insulted.
I still think, I think, I think, I think that when you get to the workshops, the workshops aren't a vote on up or down, it's a vote on, or an expression of what you think would be best. That's what it is.
Right. But, you're asking for the public input now, you're saying you want to make this community effort, but yet, the most important thing, that, that at least the 12 people that spoke last time, which I think represented a, a very important aspects of the community, were against the Assembly Bill, putting the Assembly Bill in place before we had a plan. And you basically just said, "I don't care what you have to say, we're going to do this because you don't..." That's basically what you did. People, there's people that said, "Oh, you know what? I'm not even going to come to council meetings anymore." Yeah, I, I, people always say, "You need to come voice your opinion, you need to come voice your opinion." People are saying, "That's why I don't go to council meetings anymore, because I basically just get those doors shut in my face." It was, it was the manner in which it was done, done. I, I still struggle with this whole thing where, look, we had a one, you know, this council, here's another thing, this council approved a contract with Lewis Group nine months ago, which originally going to be a nine-month contract, which on a recommendation from yourself, made it a one-year contract. We're nine months in, and I'm looking at, oh, number one, this is part of their contract. Number one, the feasibility of development of the property in light of current deed restrictions. So, we're not even looking at current development, in light of current deed restrictions, we're just trying to change those. Number two, conceptual planning of the market property, including design. Has that been presented? No. I mean, what have we gotten in nine months from a contract that we approved, and now we're already proceeding forward, and we haven't even got what we approved the first time? I didn't approve it, you guys did. You know, you guys should be mad that you didn't get what you voted for, I didn't vote for it.
Can I make a comment real quick? And Sean, I appreciate your passion for this. This is not, this government body is not about individual council members, it's about a group. I never go away if I don't support something, saying I lost. I think the process is the process, and however we come up with whatever we come up with, whether it's this subject or any other, this, this is the city. We represent the citizens, and I don't win or lose here. I do the best that I can. So, to think that because I voted for or against something, that I'm offended that nothing's happened, that's, that's incumbent upon myself, all of us here and staff, to make sure things happen in a timely fashion. So, I, I want to point out that this is a government body, it's not five individuals, and I think that's important moving forward, because this, however we move forward with this, like I've said before, I'm, I'm ready at the end of the day to say, you know, we're scrapping it and we're moving on. But, I think that if we look at it as individuals, we are going to cause us, ourselves, more heartache in the end than coming up with compromise. Hey, listen, I've, I've offered up many, and I don't want to get off the subject too much, but I've offered up many compromises on reducing costs and increasing revenue in the lighting and landscape districts for over, well over a year. And the last time, I asked my colleagues for support on that, and we will move forward with that, but I think that we are not individuals here, we're, we're a group, and we need to look at ourselves that way.
Well, I'm sorry you're offended by my comments.
Oh, I wasn't offended.
Okay. Well, I, I felt like, you know, I, I, it could come off a little abrasive. I, what I'm, what I'm getting at is, you know, I see myself, I think all of us up here should see ourselves as representative of the citizens, that's who elected us. And it just pains me to, to feel like we're not listening at certain instances, but then we care, so, this is the point I make. In reference to the contract that we approved, you know, you know, I remember clearly being told, "Well, this doesn't commit us to anything. We're just going to look at what we can do, and we're just going to look at some plans, and blah, blah, blah." And I voted no on it because there were certain things I didn't like about it. And, you know, but this body as a whole did approve it. And a council of five approves something, it moves forward, and that's democracy, you know? That's how it works. And I get that. But what I'm frustrated with now is now we're at a point where we're going outside of what you guys even approved, or what the council, should I say, excuse me, what we as a council approved. We're outside of that now, where we're changing 50-year-old legislation now. We're changing it. That is not anywhere in that contract. It's nowhere in it. We're now, that contract is sitting here, and it's just kind of, you know, simmering or whatever, and maybe we're just now getting going on it, is what I'm kind of taking from this presentation. We're just now kind of getting rolling on it. But now, we've kind of already crossed out of that boundary, and now, we're at a point where we're just like, "Oh, don't worry, you know, we're not doing anything that can't, we can't just put the ax on." But yet, we are. I mean, because it's just, we're stepping over a line that's going to be hard to return from. And, you know, I hope there's some compromises with this language. You know, I've heard some ideas tonight. I've heard you suggest some ideas that were great. I, for one, would like to see verbiage in the one section where it says that the city can continue to run a city-run market. I think we should change that. I think it should be opened up where it says if the city ever wanted to partner up with a private entity, or allow a private entity to run the market, that that could be a viable option, instead of putting us against a wall, saying the city can only run the market. I mean, that would be language I think should be opened up, if we're loosening up language in here. You know, there was some talk about 3773, you know, how in the staff report, it says that in 1982, that the 3773 recognized changes over time, and that properties could be utilized for unique financial responsibilities. So, they're basically making it sound like 3773 was a wake-up call, saying, "Hey, we can use this property, you know, better." And that was why it was done. But also, what happened with that was something else very interesting. There was language changes, where it went from substantial to solely. So, the legislator, they recognized that it was important that to say, "Okay, you can run a market, and you can do something with, you can sell seven acres. We'll let you do that." But we're going to tighten up that other language a little bit more to make sure that it's very clear of what we want the intent to be. And by the way, that was the last time that this was altered, and we were allowed to sell seven acres. And I was understanding by what I read on AB 3773, is that the sale of that property was supposed to support Parks and Recreation. And the evidence that I've seen, and what I've heard, is that money did not do that. So, how did that work out?
That's wrong, Sean.
Yeah, is it?
That goes back to 1985. There's an individual in the community that has made that claim for over 35 years, that that money was inappropriately spent.
What did it get spent on?
There is, that's what I'm saying. It wasn't. It went into the '06, from everything I understand. And there's been no evidence that it went anywhere else but there.
So, it was one time, it was a one-time sale, and--
It was a one-time sale to F and M Bank.
And then, we bought part of it back for more money? Is that what happened?
I don't recall those specifics. But one thing I'd like to point out, too. You say in the agreement that with Lewis Homes, "We're inconsistent with AB 3773." Well, the agreement, it says, it says, "The negotiations hereunder shall be based on the development concept, which shall be consistent with the above restricted allowable uses under AB 3773, and/or additional approvals from the state legislature to modify the uses currently allowed on the site under AB 3773." So, that discussion, and what we're doing here tonight, was absolutely contemplated under the agreement that was approved nine months ago.
No, it says that there are feasibility development under current deed restrictions, under current deed restrictions, not altered deed restrictions.
I'm just reading what the contract says.
Did you really read the contract, though?
It's under development concept.
Yeah, read it. Read it out, read number one, bullet number one. Read it.
There is no bullet. There's a paragraph, and then I'm reading the second paragraph. I'm reading the second paragraph. It says, "The negotiations hereunder shall be based on the development concept, which shall be consistent with the above restricted uses." Those are restricted uses, which talk about park and recreation facilities allowed under AB 3773, and/or additional approvals from the state legislature to modify the uses allowed under the site under AB 3773. What you said was, "We are inconsistent with what we're doing here tonight in proposing this legislation, because it's inconsistent with the original agreement." That, in fact, is not true.
It is true. Section number 100, negotiations, point 101, section one, "The feasibility of development in light of existing deed restrictions on the site pursuant to Assembly Bill 3773." That's the contract, this is the Lewis Group contract. Believe me, I've read it upside down and backwards. I can email--
It's reciting the history and what is allowed. Those are under the recitals. You have to go back to see, under development concept, scope, use, development. That's on page three of seven.
And it says to modify restrictions?
Yes.
Read that to me.
Third time. "Negotiations hereunder shall be based on the development concept, which shall be consistent with the above restricted uses allowed under AB 3773, and/or additional approvals from the state legislature to modify the uses currently allowed on the site under AB 3773."
So, there's clearly contradicting language in the contract, then?
No, no, no. It's reading the recitals. Maybe the attorney can explain it better than me.
It's not conflicting language. The introduction about the background is that you have to evaluate the feasibility in light of the current deed restrictions. So, you obviously want to make sure when you're entering into a negotiation with a developer, that they understand that there are these deed restrictions. So, there are those current deed restrictions in place, and then you have the provision later on that goes into, you are aware that there is this deed restriction in place on AB 3773, which is the first paragraph of section 201. And then, you have the second paragraph, which says that the negotiations will look at either uses potentially under the current deed restrictions of AB 3773, or some amendment thereto.
So, it states, "We'll look at, we'll look at, we'll look at options under it, and then, and then it says that it can be modified, or we will look at something that could be under or modified."
Yes. This E and A is strictly a feasibility phase. We did not intentionally go into any further piece, so that anything further would have to come back to council. This has nothing to do with any, it doesn't get into the final, I think it's the final section of this agreement, addresses that this doesn't authorize, or bind the city council to sell the land, or to enter into any further development agreement, or something along those lines. So, this is the feasibility. This is the current deed restriction. This is when we're evaluating the feasibility of a development plan. We've got to take that into account. Can that be changed if that's where the feasibility analysis goes? So, that's just part of where we're at right now.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Thank you. I would like to say my follow-counsel member, "We are here, that's why I heard the conversation. We are here, everybody, for better for the city. All staff is here. Everybody wants better for the city." And I certainly like, you know, the public comment. I do understand the public comment, it's 10 people, but they, their opinion, to me, is very important what the public comments come to the podium. And the other thing, that decision we can make, we can listen to the public matter, then we can thank ourselves for the better for the city. And then, this, you know, this agenda, the reason I stress this more, because this is a very, like in a lifetime agenda. And I want to make sure myself, and I will ask the council, this agenda should be passed with the unanimous vote. And, you know, but another, the other way, if something, I say, "No, it should not be hurt me at all. It should not be against anybody." This is just, we're making the decision, just out of business. There's no personal. Thank you. Any other council member, any more discussion?
I mean, I get it. I understand that there's a lack of trust with city council and city management. We've had some things go on over the past few years that has led to that. And I get it. This is huge. This is, this is a huge change that could be happening here in Galt. It could be exciting. It's, I'm sure Rayleigh's was exciting when that shopping center came in. Save Mart, when they bought out and built a new school building, had to be exciting, right? I really hope that the public understands that this council's not taking it lightly. That's why we're taking so long to discuss it and listen to it. But we also understand that we need to make a significant change, and we cannot maintain the status quo any longer. I've really researched a lot. I've spent hours with staff and talked to staff. I've talked to community members. There's a lot of community members excited who say, "Oh, yes, this needs to happen." But like Councilmember Campion said, they're not willing to come to a meeting. Some of them have expressed to me they're kind of afraid to come because of some of the things that have gone on, and the yelling at people and stuff. So, you know, I'm excited about the possibility of new sports facilities, maybe upgraded. Our sports facilities out there are tired, and we can't afford, Armando, can we afford to fix any of them or repair any of them? We can't. So, this course of action could really help with that for our kids. And I know a lot of people have emotional ties to the softball fields. But when I talk to the kids who actually play there, they say there's things that need to be upgraded, and they're kind of concerned about the status of the fields. So, if we could get some new, brand-new fields that drain properly, things like that, that's what we're looking into. But remember, we will see the proposed conceptual plans in July, so, and after the community has provided their input. And like, you know, if you want a movie theater, all kinds of things, we might. And at that time, if the council, if this council's not satisfied, if it doesn't look like it's going to fix the revenue stream, then we just pull it. We pull the bill. We can let the process continue, because the final decision will not be made until July. And we can't, we can even add an agenda item in July, if you guys want, that, to make the final approval for the legislation. The council, back in 1982, was brave. They changed the Assembly Bill to allow for the Galt flea market. There was a lot of people opposed to that Galt flea market, so they had to make that decision back in the 80s to change that Assembly Bill. And, you know, we can't just be a place that someone wants to live. We have to be a livable place. A broke city is not always a livable place, and we've, we've got to stop and figure this out. So, that's all I have to say on that.
I would like to discuss some of the verbiage then, in the, that, I mean, if there's going to be verbiage approved, I would like to suggest some things that I think would be compromises and would like to discuss. I know Paul has some. First of all, the one is that the use of the word "remove" in the main language, you know, that says the intent is to remove existing deed restrictions. I think that's very inaccurate, because we're not removing all existing deed restrictions. We're simply modifying them. I would just like to see a simple word change, such as modify, would be better suited. We're, you know, the intent is to modify current deed restrictions. Now, it seems petty, but--
I'm sorry, where are you at, Sean?
So, in the main part of the body, under intent--
What paragraph?
It talks about the intent of Bill 2220 is to modify current deed restrictions. That's one. The other is that there was some conflicting language. I just wanted to maybe get clarification from Kimberly. It talks about, and I can give you the section numbers on this. This is section C, article two. It states that such long-term revenues may, it states that revenue needs to be associated with the sale, or lease, or disposition of property. And then, there's contradictory language, actually, in the staff report. It says that such, says such revenues need to be in addition to property-related compensation. So, when you say sales tax or property tax, property tax, to me, seems like property-related compensation. So, the language is saying that any revenues that are generated from a sale of the property need to be in addition to property-related compensation. So, I just, I mean, one of them is in the strikeouts that, in the bill, the other one is actually in the staff report verbiage. I can point out--
So, I wrote that, so why don't we deconstruct that, just to make sure that you can understand what the intent of that language was? Are you looking at C1 in the--
So, the first part of it is actually on page two of the agenda report. So, page two, paragraph two, about two-thirds of the way down, it says, "Any disposition of properties by lease, sale, or other conveyance must identify the aforementioned long-term revenue source in addition to any property-related compensation."
Okay. Two things. Yes, or what that is intended to do is say that with respect to any property, however it's dealt with, could, if it were to be, let's just talk sale. If it were to be the sale of the property, the proceeds from that sale must go to Parks and Rec. So, in a typical sale environment, you sell the piece of property for a dollar. That dollar needs to go to Parks and Recreation, to Fund VI. But, the language then also says that you can't have a sale, or that in order to have a sale, you must first identify a long-term revenue source that would be associated with that sale. So, there's two things going on with land. If a parcel were to be sold, the proceeds have to go to Fund VI. And then, secondarily, in order to have a sale, or lease of land for that matter, there has to be the identification of long-term revenue. Now, the second point I want to make is that you're reading the staff report. The staff report will have no force in effect of--
Right, I understand that.
Why don't we go down to the legislation? Because I think that when, when you look at it there, and it's packaged together, I can read it, and--
Yeah, I have it in front of me.
I think that it makes sense. So, it says, "In addition to the proceeds from any sale," and that was carving out in that language that it's not just a one-time sale, and it's done. Can't be. So, "In addition to the proceeds from any sale, lease, or disposition of a parcel or parcels, subject to section B," which is defined above, and it's just talking about the land itself, "City shall," mandatory language, "ensure a long-term revenue stream dedicated to Parks and Recreation programs, maintenance, and facilities is associated with such sale, lease, or disposition." So, if that doesn't happen, if there is not a long-term source of revenue associated with that, the sale itself can't go forward.
Yeah, and I know one was the staff report, and one was the actual verbiage. I just thought that they were a little conflicting. I just want to be fair, because I think that, you know, any little, I don't want anything, if the council should approve any verbiage tonight, I want to make sure that there's, you know, I know that we can change language moving forward, but it's probably not likely. I mean, maybe you'll add language, but I think that to take out language is probably going to be less likely to happen moving forward. So, I just don't want there to be any, like, you know, open-for-interpretation-type language where--
So, having written the staff report, let me make clear that the staff report is intended to be, state exactly what's happening here. But staff reports sometimes are, they aren't written in more technical language all the time. And so, if my attempt at describing what I just went through here in the actual legislation is a little vague, or, you know, gave you a pause for concern, let me declare for the record that the staff report is intended to mirror this exact language.
And then, the other language was--
Can we go back to that real quick?
Yeah.
How can we clean that up? Or--
Well, he's saying the staff--
I think that what his confusion was, he didn't want the staff report saying something different--
Oh, got it, got it.
And what I'm saying is, the staff report wasn't intended to say anything different. It's intended to communicate what's in this legislation.
So, the other thing I see is, you know, I kind of struggle with where it basically says, you know, that there has to be a long-term revenue source associated with any sale, but that long-term revenue source can, you know, be sales tax or property tax. Like, that would be sufficient. I just wish there was more teeth in that, like to, you know, maybe even some talk of maybe adding some verbiage, where there's a certain dollar figure associated with something. I just, it just seems like, you know, you could just build a gas station and a Panda Express, and you're going to get sales tax on it, and then, like, we just check that box and say, we, you know, and I'm not in favor of selling property to do something like what I just described. So, I think it has to be more, I mean, I just feel like it's just a little too minimal.
So, what that paragraph, the second sentence of that paragraph says, "Such long-term revenue stream may include, but not be limited to, sales tax, property tax, or other long-term revenue base, whether public or private." And the phrase, "other long-term revenue base, whether public," what that's getting at when we're referencing public is, that could be a community facilities district, it could be a public improvement district, it could be any, the city availing itself to any of the possible funding mechanisms that are legal for the city to enter into, that are defined in law. The other thing it says is "or private," which means that if, that there may be something that happens where the city would want to say, "Well, you know what? We need a long-term revenue source in addition to the public offerings," you know, as to a particular part of the deal. But trying to, what this language is intended to do is open the door wide, so that when and if the city were to ever consider something, and that assumes that a Galt Market community plan even was ever adopted, that it's wide open for the city to determine what is-- that it's, it's wide open for the city to determine what is acceptable to it at the time for a, a long-term revenue source.
Okay, yeah, it's just the word "may". It said "may include", so that basically that would be, or, and obviously it could happen as well.
So, in this case, typically, I, I mean, I, I fully understand where you're coming from on the word "may", but in this case, I think it's the good word, a good use of the word "may" because it opens that door wide. It doesn't limit it to just sales tax or just property tax.
And then there's, there's a verbiage in here about that the city may operate municipal buildings substantially constructed prior to the effective date of this act. And then the new language added in here is "may add additional improvements", and "may also conduct a city-operated flea market, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." So, my, my concern is with the "may add additional improvements", it's basically just saying that, you know, the City of Galt can continue to run municipal buildings on the property under the new bill, under the new amendments, and make improvements to those buildings. I just want to, I, I would like to see some kind of verbiage in there that, that says that no revenue, like, we sell 15 acres of the property in development, and we're getting a, a revenue stream, and now that money is going to now be used to now build, like, and do improvements to City Hall. I, I just, I struggle with that because I don't think that that's what the, the community would want. It's, it's property to, to use money derived from that. To me, that's a little gray area. It's not really Parks and Recreation. It might be on property that is part of that, Parks and Recreation property, but it's just, I, I just would like to see some language that says, you know, like, you know, renovations and things to City Hall are not going to be made with '06 money. That was, that was one thing. And then, one other item was that, again, I mentioned the, the city-operated market. I think it's putting us a little bit kind of into a corner by saying that the market has to be city-operated.
It's not what it says. Yeah, that, that's not what it means. And, and so, I, I think that, let's deal with the, the first one if we could, just to, to stay on, so that I don't skip over something. So, the term "may add, may add additional improvements" was intended to recognize that there may be additional improvements added to the land, not necessarily public buildings. And, and so, "that may add additional improvements", I'm just going to make this up because I don't know what the public will come up with, so. But, the, an example would be a hotel or retail of some sort or type, that those may be additional improvements constructed on the property itself. And so, that is a, that isolated statement, "may add additional improvements", is, does not modify that the City of Galt may operate municipal buildings substantially constructed prior to the effective...
Right, so the way you're reading it is the city may operate municipal buildings and, you know, or, that'd be one point. And then, can also do additional improvements to the property. And then the third thing, also conduct a city-operated flea market. It does say "city-operated flea market". I, I think it would be more clear if it said, "The, the City of Galt may", and then have bullet points where it says, "Continue, you know, to operate municipal buildings", and then, number two, "Add additional improvements to the property", and number three, "Continue to run the market", then there's no, there's no misinterpretation of that those are separate things. Because it reads to me like it just says, "We can operate municipal buildings and then make improvements." Do you see that what I'm saying?
Yeah, and, and so that, just for clarification, that language comes from the original bill. So, that, that isn't added in by, by us that, in fact...
Well, it's highlighted in blue, so I thought it was new.
And, you know... Well, it's in the original legislation that I was just looking at.
Okay, it's on page, it's on page six of the staff report, which is the actual, you know, it's, yeah, page...
Page two of the bill?
Page two of the bill, right, page six of, and it's, it's Section B. It struck out A, and it says Section B. And it's the second sentence, it's highlighted in blue, so that's why I thought it was, you know...
Oh, on my, on my version, it's not in blue.
Oh, okay, on ours is in, okay, okay.
Yeah, on, on mine, it's, it's, it's in black, and "may also conduct a city-operated flea market". So, let's, let's talk about that in a sense, because your concern would be, as I under, so this is the original legislation, or, or verbiage in the original legislation. And, and if I'm understanding your concern, your concern would be, well, what if the city wanted to privatize it and, and do something? I guess we could modify the language to, to say something like that.
Well, it's just an idea because I, I, you know...
I don't know that this would exclude that. So, we operate a building department right now, but we contract for services.
Right, well, I mean, we could subcontract, but I just don't know, I'm just worried that language would be a sticking point where, let's say at some point we're approached by a company who says, you know, "We can, you know, make the, we can privatize the market. We can make it great again, blah, blah, blah", and we're like, "Oh, we'd love to do that", but it says in the bill that we just got pushed through, you know, in, in 2020 that says it has to be city-operated, and then, and then it's interpreted as legal, the legal interpretation of that is, yeah, we can't do that.
Well, if you wanted to, I suppose there could, the council could discuss removing the, the words "city-operated", and just leave it as "may also conduct a flea market on the property".
Yeah, I, I mean, it's just, it's just, this is, these are one of my things, it's a theory, if you want to...
Yeah, can I just chime in on that real quick? I, I think we need to be very, very careful about this because my understanding is, is that in 1982, when we went to the, Norm Waters, who was our Assembly member in this area, and said, "Hey, we want to, you know, operate a city-owned market", the intent of that was the city to run a market to make money for Parks and Recreation. I'm kind of paraphrasing what I've read. And so, I think that we need to be very deliberate about whether or not we open it up to future privatization of that. I would be more in favor of, because I, I see that we might need the flexibility, like you said, Sean, if somebody came in and said, "Hey, here's what we've done in X community, and we can do X, Y, and Z in your community", but maybe it's language that says "city-owned" or "city-operated"...
Or "city-owned" market?
"City-owned" market, maybe.
City-owned, sure.
That way, we can...
I understand what you're saying.
Have a contractor. I just don't want to just sell our market off.
No, that's not, believe me, that's not my intention.
Well, that's, no, I know, but that's what we could get from that.
I mean, we are privatizing the land, so technically, I get what you're saying. I, I would, I would think "owned" may be better. I just, basically, just don't want to limit it, because if you subcontracted or you had some money, but you, yeah, I think "owned" might be more specific, because then you're not selling the property. But, look, the thing of it is, let's look at the big picture here. We're privatizing, we're talking about privatizing some of the properties, so now we're concerned about the market. Really, to be honest with you, under this whole thing, if the market was to fail, and, and Galt just said, "Look, we're not going to have a flea market anymore in, say, in 10 years from now", they could just sell that property, there's nothing in there that says we have to keep the market. There isn't. I mean, let's be honest. So, I was...
Never has been, yeah.
There isn't, right?
And there never has been.
There's nothing that says we have to keep the market. So, with that being said, I, and I like your language. I think that would work for, for what my ideas, you know, I don't know what the rest of council feels. And these are just ideas that maybe we could chew on and talk about in next meeting. I don't, I, these are just things that I'm, if we're opening up language and making ourselves flexible, I think that that's putting us into a hole right there with just saying we can only run, you know, the market. By the way, the market was running like 30-some years prior to 19, we basically were just asking if it was okay if we can keep running it. We, we were running it without permission, verbiage for a lot of time, but...
I wasn't going to read.
Yeah. And then the last thing was, just this one last thing, was that I actually think that, that there should be some language added about the, you know, the, the public participation. So, I came up with something, this was actually given to me by a friend who's in, he's in, they work in the legislation. So, "In the spirit of transparency and in an effort to inform, maximize participation and support from the public, the city shall publish a draft of the plan that's came up with, 30 days, for, publish it for 30 days and allow public comment. This draft will be published on the city webpage, social media site, direct mailer, and local newspaper outlets. Public input can be in the form of written or email", so it wouldn't be something where it kept coming council meeting. "Prior to any adoption of the city council or vote on such plan, the city would review and address in writing each valid concern from citizens." And the reason I think that if we're so pro getting input, look, we have meetings on a Monday night. If you work on a Monday, you can't come to either one of those meetings. I think it's unfair to alienate those people. Now, you could come and speak a public comment, but that's clearly not the same. If we come up with a plan next June, a plan that's a collaborative effort from the community, and they say, "Here's the plan", I don't think that there's any harm in putting that out there and saying, "If you have any, you know, you want to write to the city in writing, or you want to email the city and say, 'This is a valid concern'". Now, I say "valid" meaning, you know, it has to be something that would be considered valid. And the city will address those concerns individually before we actually make a final vote. I, I think it's just another extra safeguard that the city, that the, that the community has had all off, offer, or opportunities to, to weigh in on said plan once it's, once it's adopted.
You want that in the bill? Is that what you're saying?
Well, there's no verbiage in the bill at all that says that we have to have public input.
Well, I, I think, I think we simply give direction to staff on the type of note, public notice and notification that we want on this to ensure that we do have notification.
Yeah, but you're talking about public notification like we just put, like, like stuff's done when somebody's going to build a subdivision? It's publicly notified? Because I think that's not...
Well, no, what I'm saying is if you have concerns about specific notice requirements, then I think we can discuss that. But, I don't think it needs to go on a bill. I mean, collectively, the council can decide on what kind of notice they want.
Yeah, well, I think, then, then I think that, I'd just like to see the council adopt some sort of protocol when we get to that point with the plan, that we've come to some kind of agreement of how to allow the maximum input from the community and not just say, "Well, we had those two meetings, you know, back in March, and here we are, and I know there's another meeting coming up", but I'm just, I'm just cautious of the fact that a lot of people can't come to meetings in the evenings. They work and they're, and they're...
Well, I, I think putting it on the website's a good idea. I don't have a problem with it.
But I'm, and I also just want to post, I mean, I think it needs to be pushed. The information needs to be post, pushed in all different asterisks. I mean, I think it should be published, you know, on, on our social media page, on the website, and maybe in the newspaper. Or, you know, we mailed out this thing about the meeting. I would like a brochure to be mailed out. Here's the, here's the plan that we're going to do. If you have any concerns, please contact the city or email at this address. If that went to every citizen, just like we mailed that, then people can't say, "Oh, I never, I never..."
It was a little postcard?
Yeah, it was mailed out, right?
Yeah, that was at the, the, no, that was a little postcard, not a big...
Yeah, I meant, yeah.
I get what you're saying. You know, whether, the council can direct as council member campaign.
Well, the city newsletter.
Exactly.
Like I said, I'm just concerned, I've had people, I had two people email me today that were upset because they can't make Monday meetings, and both of the meetings are on a Monday. And it's like, you know, we could have had them on a different day to allow flexibility, and we didn't. And so, there's people that wanted to come, and now they can't, so...
Well, they can always email though, too. I mean, I mean, if they can't be present, physically present, you can, you know, write your comments, submit them. They become part of the public record.
So, Chris, can you tell us why you guys picked Monday? Or Amy can?
No, I, well, I think we both can speak to it. It just seemed a convenient evening. I mean, we tried to pick one that we thought we can capture as many people. We know Tuesday nights, you know, we have council, Thursday night planning commission, so we tried to stick with a night that we knew was open for us. We do know that there is an early school joint board meeting or some conference. They, the school staff indicated that they plan to join us after that, but it is earlier. So, our meeting on the ninth, for example, is at 6:00. I think their meeting starts a little bit earlier, and they thought they had a light agenda, and then can make, come to our workshop.
Well, maybe, so, I know there's additional meetings besides the ninth and the 20, what's the second one, the 20 what?
The 30th, or the, is it the 30th?
Correct, so they're both Monday evenings.
So, there is additional meetings after that, but that's, the first one was input, second one is start, put this plan together, and there's additional meetings. I would just like to throw it out there that we should consider the next meeting after that, where we still are, at that point, still having public input or, or on the plan at that point, that we need to maybe look at maybe a weekend day. I mean, you know, outside of, we need to be flexible, I think.
I, I like the idea of trying to capture more input, especially after we have some concepts that people can kind of sink their teeth into. So, having some sort of concepts out or alternative, the preferred alternative, to get out to the general public to provide comments, I think, is a good idea. And if that is the direction from council, we as staff would be happy to carry that out. And we'd figure out a way to make sure that we are able to reach people and receive comments if they want to do that.
You know, you know, same thing I was talking about earlier, Sunrise, you know, and Tom said, "The June 30th", if we can extend that date maybe month, month and a half, because the last date is August 20th, we can do it. There, there is two things. I like one thing, give the staff more time to prepare. The second time is, and this is the date it looked like, and we change over with interim city manager and the regular city manager. So, I like to give couple months to change their date instead of June 30 to maybe August 20.
Mr. Mayor, we, we had a typo in an original draft. And if yours says June 30, 2020, it should be June 30, 2021.
Oh, it's over...
Yeah, it's next year.
It's a year.
It's next year.
Oh, okay.
So, I might, I might add, you know, what I, what I would be a little bit cautious about is adding with that, and that was a good point Mayor Santu, is we do have a timeframe in which to adopt the plan according to the language you're putting forward. So, if we are putting extra steps on the planning process, which again, I don't mind, we may consider pushing that date out just to be, you know, cover our bases. Because, I mean, it is a little bit of a timeframe. I think we can make that. Once we come up with an alternative design, a preferred alternative, we have to start the sequo process. I disagree with Mr. Elmore on our timelines. We are planning to do a mitigated neck deck for the, for the plan, and I believe we can accomplish that in six to 12 months, probably more like a nine-month window. So, after we have that preferred alternative, we're then back to city council for final approval and sequo clearance probably in the first quarter of 2021. So, putting additional steps might push that date out a little bit, and we might want to give ourselves some cover just in case. So, just a thought.
You, you could easily say September 30th, 2021.
Okay.
You know, there is one more thing I, you know, I like to modify on that bill. Depositions of lease, and if we take off that we have a sale at this time, and then we still have the opportunity of something, community will come up with different, then we can put back to on August 20.
What he's saying is he basically wants to remove the word "sale" from the, from the ling, from the language tonight, and if we, after community input, moving forward before our deadline, to add and change verbiage before, for August, we can add the word "sale" back in at that time. That's what he's saying.
My concern with that is, my concern with that would be is, just as the representative from Louis Holmes spoke, it's, it's there to provide the city with flexibility, and that takes away flexibility in this process. And, and I for one would not want to, to remove that as an opportunity.
Yeah, but we did ask the loose group, and they don't have their problem. But, if we really have their trouble, then we can go back and put them back on the August 20.
He already told us that, you know, it would reduce the number of, of potential retail users, I think, by, to 30% or something like that.
Well, what the mayor's saying is that, he's just saying, but if we still have all the way till August to tweak any language, you know, we could alter it three more times between now and August if we really wanted to, that why not? We just, we, I, I kind of share his consent where I think it's easier to add something in than it is to remove it. Once we put language, I think it's going to be harder to remove than to add.
Well, again, I, I'm comfortable with the way the language is written.
I just think the community, that seems to me, at least what I've heard, is a, seems to be a real sticking point at the community. And I think, like Mr. Vanderburg, I think it was, said, you know, that he thinks the community would warm up to the idea a little more if we, maybe, maybe would be a little more receptive to this plan we afford if that was at least not in there. Until we, until we hear from the, you know, I mean, again, I, I go back to my position on this, whereas I wanted to see a plan first. I've, I've been voting no on this so far along, not because I'm against doing nothing. I, I want to set that to rest right now. I just wanted to see how things happened in a certain order, and I was not happy with that order. So, again, if, if public input is where we're at now, and we're going to be moving forward in that manner, and we're going to be altering language, I mean, I, I don't think there's any harm in that.
Especially at this time, I don't feel comfortable to put a sale in, in that...
I mean, I think, I don't know how Mr. Mayor, I think for me, if we want to proceed, if, if we want to get back on solid footing and proceed with this as, as a whole council, like, meaning that we're all kind of on the same page, I think that would be, that would be a start to that. Because I think for me tonight, after all I've said, and I made a lot of recommendations about language changes, which I very much still feel strongly about all those, from, for tonight, for me, for the approving the language tonight, if the word "sale" is still in there, it's going to be a no for me. And I would, I would very much like to say yes to something and go for this, but I think for me, I would have to see that change at the present time, and then we can decide later to add it back in, depending on what the public's input was over the next, you know, 30 days or 60 days. 30 days or 60 days, or before now August.
I have a quick question for city manager Haglin. If we were to move, remove sale from, or actually, I think the word is sell, from the language, how, I guess, how would we move forward in the public process with options, in terms of what we could do with the product? Would it, would it greatly reduce the options we have?
It certainly will reduce options, I mean, so, for, we, we've dealt with other issues on, you know, the, the sale or lease of properties in, in the city, and clearly, um, there can be a preference, depending upon the particular situation of someone coming in and investing, and, and putting in whatever development they're gonna put in, that they, they want to do that with, through ownership of the land, so, I think that, you know, as council member Campion said, having the, the sale in there, as well as lease, provides that a, a, a much larger area within which the city can maneuver. It's ultimately up to the city, though, if it ever sells, or if it ever leases, and it can actually be a limiting factor that you address, sale or lease can be a limiting factor that you address in the Galt Market Community Plan itself. You may, through the planning process, you, you, you may allow that to move forward and decide that these properties would never be for sale, but through the process, through public participation, these properties, maybe, when it's all said and done, and the public has commented, that, yeah, we would be willing to sell those, and, and, and so, two things are happening. One, you're preserving the ultimate flexibility, knowing that further down, any disposition of the property, however that occurs, is coupled with a two-factor authentication, if you will, on making sure that the revenue goes to Parks and Rec, and, and, and then you are, through the Galt Market Community Plan itself, maybe further limiting what you're, you're willing to do.
In terms of the exercise, though, of, and I've been in, in several meeting, public meetings, where we're discussing conceptual ideas about, and quite honestly, for, for, you know, full disclosure, it, it's park development, that, you know, what amenities you'll put in a park, so, that's the frame of reference that I'm coming from, so, how, how does that work? Can we say, let's just say for the sake of argument, we take sell out of this, and it's just lease and/or otherwise dispose. In, in the exercise with the public, can we say, you know, public member John Doe says, I think we should do X, which would require the sale of, of five acres, 10 acres, at that point, do we have to say no? Because the assembly bill as it's written, or the proposed language as it's written now, we can't do that, or?
I think you'd certainly have to acknowledge that, and, and that, that, so then the ideas that come forward would have to be tempered with, your, your, your public ideas can come forward, but it will be that, you know, that type of, of development that you're talking about, very likely will turn on whether or not the city council is willing to add the word sale in, the, and, and so, it's, it's, it's part of, you know, the, the, the whole process in, in terms of, you know, how, how is the city setting up the parameters for what the public will consider as a part of the Galt Community Market Plan design process?
But Tom, you're assuming the parameters are being set tonight, but they're not, the parameters are open and flexible, and they're fluid until August, it kind of bothers me to think that we're gonna paint ourselves in a corner where you're saying, we only need to have sale, look, I, I would, I would hope that Lewis Group, or whoever, is gonna come forward the plan that says, look, here's all kinds of things we could do, we could do this, we could do that, whatever, if the public came to us after looking at a conceptual plan and said, you know, we don't, we, we would favor this only if it was a lease-type thing, and then, and then Lewis Group has already, you know, consented that they're, they're flexible and entertaining different options, and the council said, okay, well, the public seems to be in favor of said plan, if, if it's a lease only, then we would be removing the word sale, but again, it's a fluid, that, that's what bothers me, is we're talking about verbiage, and then we're talking about a timeline, we can tweak verbiage this date, and this date, and this date, but really, you guys are talking, like, the way you're talking is like, you want to pin it down now, and, and then nothing's gonna change, if there's option to change things, then why is everybody getting hung up on this word right now? That, to me, seems.
Well, I think I, I was just trying to respond to the question, and it seems to me the question boils down to, or, and correct me, Vice Mayor, if, if I'm wrong, but I think your question was essentially, is there more opportunity or less opportunity if the word sell and sale are removed? My, my thought is that there's less opportunity, it provides a bit of a restriction. If it's in there, it provides more, the council can discuss amongst itself whether or not it wants to remove or, or maintain those words.
But, but the other thing, this is not, if we need to change, there is an opportunity, we can change it, and that's why August 20th, we can change it, but you know, my concern is, and especially, there's a lot of citizen, you know, concern is when you put that sale to the property, if something don't work it, everybody agree it, and, and move that, that, you know, add on August 20th, instead of something we can add, we can delete on, on that date.
So, here, here's my concern, if we take that off the table, because we want to appease some of the citizens, could make them feel a little better, and then the council comes to an agreement to maybe sell five acres off, 10 acres off, whatever, and then we change, after we've had all these meetings with that verbiage without sale in it, and then, okay, we changed our mind now, because we have till August, we're gonna put that word in there now, that could make a lot of mistrust with the public. We're not having everything on the table.
Overriding information that would justify the removal of the word sale, because everything I've heard here tonight is, it provides a better opportunity to execute what the underlying purpose is, so I, 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 I would not want to start, you know, in, in a handicap position to run this through the process, I, I think that, that, you know, if, if in the end, we decide we don't want to sell the property, the language can be amended as easily.
I'm only trying to come up with a compromise for the people right now, the people are in a position right now, they're not happy because we're putting the cart before the horse.
But that's some people, and I've talked to people that don't, again, Sean.
Again, it's fluid, Kurt, if we're gonna change, if we can modify, what does it matter, you're so hung up on this, what?
No, I'm not hung up on it.
You, you are, it's a sale or no, it's a sale, you're a sale or no, just.
I've, I've, based on what I've heard tonight.
I'm trying to compromise with you.
It ha, it handicaps us.
I'm trying to compromise with you.
Okay.
You don't think if we stick it back in, say we changed our mind, that will make more mistrust?
Not if that's what the community wanted.
But they, you know.
That's all I'm trying to do is get community input before we finalize the language.
But you'll always have somebody who said, I didn't make it to that meeting, that wasn't what I wanted.
Yeah, right.
It's just options.
Well, clearly, there's no compromise for some of you, I, I'm trying to come up with a compromise, look, I'm trying to compromise, I really am, because I really would like to make this a 5-0 vote tonight, I really would like it to happen, I, I feel like it's.
Sean, can you, can you tell me why you're opposed to sale?
Because, at this point, because I want to hear from the community first, I want to see what the community thinks. So far, what I've heard, and I'm believing, I talked to a lot of people, Kurt.
Yeah?
Trust me, I do, I, sale is the number one hangup, they're like, we shouldn't be selling property.
Well, i, if, if the concept there is that you sell the property, it's a one-time revenue source, yeah, that makes no sense, but as has been, as pointed out in the report and in the legislation, you look at other long-term revenue sources to replace what is necessary to supplement property tax, you look at public service districts, and those are things that are attached to the property, attached to the property tax bill, and are paid, and that can be a supplement to and ensure a long-term revenue stream, but again, we won't know, you know, the specifics on this until you get the fiscal analysis that shows how this is gonna work, or how it could possibly work, and maybe it doesn't work, I don't know, but you, they're gonna have to look at a, a series of combinations of maybe a, a smaller market, or a medium-sized market, or maybe the same-sized market, and then they're gonna plug in other land uses, and they're gonna make some estimates based on, you know, reasonable assumptions as to what the revenue stream would be, based on sales tax, property tax, public service districts, or any other type of revenue stream that will offset whatever those, the costs are necessary to enhance not only the 06 Fund in Parks and Rec, but also to eliminate the, the structural deficit that we have, so I, I, I just, I, I look at it as, I, it makes no sense to me to remove something which provides flexibility and opportunity.
Says Kurt Campion, but what do you think the public's gonna say? I mean, I'm talking about, I want to hear from the public, look.
I, I haven't heard anything factually that, that doesn't support that.
We, we put a spot bill in place because we needed a place card holder in order to get in the session, to get in this legislative session, right? That's why we put a spot bill, so it had no language, you just need to get it in there, now, we have a deadline, our next deadline is to put some language in there, but with then, we have timelines where we can go and, and alter language. We could put in there that we're gonna build Disneyland, what does it matter what we put in the language right now, if it can be altered before, between now and August, all I want to do is suffice the deadline by having some language that we can then reach out to the public, hear what they have to say, look at some plans, look, I would, I, let me ask you this, so, so if Lewis Group said, we can come up with a viable plan that would, that would develop, you know, 30 acres of that property, and it would bring viable revenue stream, whatever, and we can do all that under a lease, you're saying to me that you wouldn't want to see it? I, I'm not interested in that, I only want to see options that have sale, is that what you're saying?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Well, then what's the harm?
This, this preserves the opportunity to sell, that's all it does, it preserves the opportunity, doesn't mandate it.
Well, does not mandate.
And, and Kurt. If someone came forward with the scenario which you described, I'd be in favor of it.
Would you?
Sure, why, why, why wouldn't I?
Because you're not compromising right now, I'm trying to compromise with you, Mr., I, I think.
I'm just trying to be rational, I'm just trying to be rational.
I am too, I'm trying to be rational to pub, the people, the, the community that are hung up on, on the sale, and they, they're, look, this is a big deal, and, and, and I think we're, again, we're rushing to, to verbiage here, you're saying, well, what does it, what does it matter if we just remove it? Well, I'm saying, well, what, what does it matter if we add it, so we, we're looking at it from two different angles.
So, if they're hung up on the sale and we take it out, they're not gonna be hung up if we put it back in?
Maybe, but if you keep it in there, they're hung up on it.
Oh, I'm sure.
It also appears sketchy, the legislation, when you try to sneak something in, we talk about that all the time, and you stick in the last minute.
We have an opportunity to change it up until August, do we not?
I feel like it's not being transparent with the public, if we take that out, to be honest.
But Councilman Lamson, we talked to the council, Jim Cooper, they don't have no problem at all, whatever you want to put in and what you want to take off, that's why he promised it, that's why he is, but I'm just trying to, we, we are a five bodies there. We have to have some kind of compromise, you know, if we want to stack that one place, I can say, no, you know, that's, that's not a good for the public, and then, and especially, this is not any harm, we still, it, it's not just we can closing the door, we still open, there is a door there, if we can put him back. Well, I, I, I like to ask everybody if they want to be this modified, but.
I'd like to move on to the next agenda item, is what I'd like to do.
Mm-hmm.
And with that, I would make a motion to, consistent with staff's recommendation.
Can I make a second motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure. I would like to make a motion that we alter the language to remove the word sale at the current time until further review from, further input from the public meetings.
Do the second?
Yes, so, if there's a second, you take the second motion first.
Somebody on second, I can move on second. May I have a vote roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano?
No.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Campion?
No.
Councilmember Lamson?
No.
Mayor Sandu?
Yes.
So, motion fail to two to three.
Can I, can I make a quick comment before we vote on the second, the, before we vote on the first motion, second? I just want to, I haven't had a chance to say this tonight, but I want to thank, truly thank all the folks that have come out, all the people that have stopped me in the store, you know, text and emailed and conversations I've had with folks, so, everybody's input is important, and want to make sure that we, moving forward, don't close any doors on the public input part, so, you know, I think that's important, that we keep that continuity and that openness to any idea, so.
So, then, next time, then, would be to take the first motion, Councilmember Campion's motion, I think we still needed a second for that motion.
Motion taken.
The motion was to move staff's recommendation. Second.
I have another quick question, did we capture all of the other questions about, actually, what Councilman Farmer brought up, as well as the others in that?
The mo, the motion is to move it as is, Campion, Councilman Campion moved to move, to prove it as is with no language changes whatsoever.
So, my question is, again, did we address those issues other than the sell piece?
Well, I, I, I wrote down what the, what Councilmember Farmer asked about, one of them was the, changing the word from city operated to city owned, and then the, the sale and sell item that you've previously decided, and I, I think that was it, because I think that we walked through the clarification of.
The other one was the modify or remove in the intent, but I don't know if that's part of the bill, actually.
I don't think that's in the bill.
Not part of the bill, right.
Can I make a substitute motion?
You can, you could do a substitute motion, or you could offer a friendly amendment to Councilmember Campion's, and if he accepts.
Can I offer a friendly amendment, Councilmember Campion? Can we include that language that says city-owned flea market rather than city-operated?
And I'd like, I was gonna bring this up after the motion, but I, I don't know that I'm opposed or in favor of that, because I don't know really what the difference is between city-owned and city-operated, and I think I'd like to have more information from staff before we make a change such as that, and that, that would be my only reason, I mean, I'm not, I can't think of any specific reason, but I just don't know what the, you know, whether there's a legal difference, or whether there's a difference in analysis to subcontract or not subcontract, so that would be my, my question.
So, it's my understanding that in the, well, one, the city-operated is the current restriction in AB 3773. I, I think in the past, there had been some analysis, and this is when we were looking at the legislative history, and the history of all of this from, you know, the 80s and 90s, that there had been some analysis that city-operated did not preclude the city from necessarily having a contractor involved in operating the market, as long as the city was in charge of setting the rents, and the timing, and collecting, obviously, the rents still had to go to the city, so you couldn't just hand it off to a contractor who collected all the revenues and moved it that way, so, I think there's some analysis in the past on that, but it, I mean, I would say that the difference would be, city-owned just means it has to be owned by the city, it's probably less restrictive than city-operated, so there was, I would say that's, probably gives you more flexibility if, to modify to city-owned, yes.
And, and the amendment was for city-owned?
For city-owned, yes, rather than operated.
Okay, yeah, then I, after that, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Paul, are you okay with that?
Well, again, it's not forever, so if you guys change your mind, can always change it later.
So, with the acceptance of the amendment, then I think we just need a sec, a second of the recommendation of staff, accepting staff's recommendation with the modification of city-operated to city-owned. And then a second.
I'll second, just gonna let you second your words, you don't want to second your words.
Yep, I have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
No.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
No. Motion passed by three to two. Thank you. Next agenda item is Community Development Department Climate Action Plan. Yes, ayes.
Good evening, Mayor again, and Councilmembers. Chris Arice, Community Development Director. It is my pleasure to introduce the next item, which is the City of Galt Climate Action Plan. I think, as I mentioned in the previous presentation, the Climate Action Plan is a city's roadmap for adhering to the state's greenhouse gas, the GHG reduction requirements. Cities and counties across the state have created these plans to address climate change. We're a bit late in creating the plan. We've had funding issues over the past few years, but we were fortunate enough to receive that Energy Commission grant, which funds this program. So, I think that was really fortunate for us. Without that funding, I'm not sure we would be here today. This is, as you know, only one of the items that that grant is funding, the other is the Community Plan, and then also the Corrigan Boulevard Master Plan. It was a great team effort to create this Climate Action Plan, and also to secure the Energy Commission grant. I'd like to thank my planning staff for all their efforts to get this far, and their contributions toward it. Also, the Air District was really important in helping create this Climate Action Plan, and also securing the funding, so I would like to thank the Air District, in particular Karen Huss, and then, in particular, really thank Rainey Planning and Management for doing the heavy lifting on the project itself, and then also the grant writing. And with that, I'd like to introduce Jacob Byrne with Rainey Planning and Management. He'll provide tonight's presentation, and after he's finished, we'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Chris, good evening, Council. Thank you. Jacob Byrne, I'm here with Rod Stinson as well, from Rainey Planning and Management. So I'll try to keep it brief today, so please feel free to stop me, to slow me down, or ask any questions as need be, but I might skip over a couple things, but I'll still try to give you kind of the full picture. One of the ways I'll do that is by walking through what I'll talk about today, so talk about some background, we'll discuss the purpose and scope of the Climate Action Plan, which I'll refer to as the CAP as well. We'll briefly touch on some benefits of the CAP, move on to the summary of results, and then talk about next steps, how will the CAP actually be implemented within the city? So I'm going to do my best to try to avoid the use of jargon tonight, but one piece of jargon I can't quite get around is the term "greenhouse gases," or GHGs. Greenhouse gases are a group of atmospheric chemicals, that most prominent of which is carbon dioxide, CO2, you might have also heard of methane, CH4, but there's a whole host of other greenhouse gases that exist either naturally or artificially in the atmosphere. Those greenhouse gases in the atmosphere act as gatekeepers, so they'll allow sunlight to enter the Earth's atmosphere. When that sunlight is then reradiated out as heat energy, those greenhouse gases can then capture the energy, not allowing it to leave the Earth's system. So if we add more greenhouse gases to the atmosphere, more heat stays within the Earth's system, which can cause climate change and, and gradual warming of the atmosphere. So, the California State Legislature and Executive Branch have identified climate change as a serious and impending risk to the state, and as a means of reducing the risks to the state from climate change, they have established greenhouse gas reduction goals on a statewide level. Those greenhouse gas reduction goals on a statewide level have, the state is going to be implementing a slew of legislation and programs to reduce greenhouse gases, but they've also directed cities and counties to step up and create climate action plans, or greenhouse gas reduction plans, to help, to help meet those statewide greenhouse gas reduction goals. The City of Galt has anticipated creation of a greenhouse gas reduction plan in city policy, COS 7.1 from the general plan. This Climate Action Plan serves to, serves to fulfill that city policy. And as Chris, Chris mentioned, the, the preparation of the Climate Action Plan was funded by the CEC grant. When the city was, was awarded that grant money, the city staff identified that one thing that they really wanted to get out of preparation of this Climate Action Plan was to be able to use a Climate Action Plan to streamline future development. In order for the Climate Action Plan to be used in that way, it had to meet certain requirements, making it a qualified Climate Action Plan, or a qualified CAP. One of those requirements is that the CAP would be adopted through a public process. That's why, one of the reasons why we're here today, that's why the CAP made it in front of the Planning Commission, and why the CAP was also subject to CEQA review, so the initial study is in front of you today as well. This slide presents a few more items that are required for a qualified Climate Action Plan. So you have, the first two points are, are kind of background information. Item number three in there gets to the real kind of meat of a Climate Action Plan, so what we did is we quantified the existing level of emissions in the city, we did what's called an inventory. From that inventory, that's, we use that as a starting point, and then we looked at the city's general plan and CCOGS numbers for estimated growth within the city into the future, specifically the year 23, and all the way out to the year 2050, and we created some projections based on those numbers. So we made a number of proj, projections. The first was called a "business-as-usual" projection, so what would happen if the state didn't take any actions to reduce greenhouse gases? What would happen if the city did the same thing, no action taken? And so what you see is greenhouse gases just moving up and up with population, a very sharp increase into the future. Our second projection into the future, then, we looked at the exist, the state programs that exist currently, and with just implementation of those statewide programs and no implementation of a city-specific CAP, you actually see that the state will be allowed, will be helping to reduce emissions into the future. So emissions will still grow, but it'll be at a slightly reduced level. We then looked at this, so the city's of Galt, of Galt's future emissions out to the year 2030 and 2050, how those would compare under those scenarios to the state's statewide reduction goals for those years as well. So what we found is that even if you take advantage of all the statewide programs that will be reducing greenhouse gases, both locally and on a state level, cities, the city's emissions were anticipated or projected to be above the state's goals for greenhouse gas reductions. So, item number four speaks to the reduction strategies that are included in the Climate Action Plan. The reduction strategies are meant to kind of reduce those emissions into the future and try to get the city in, in line to meet the state's statewide GHG reduction goals. So I won't spend too much time on this today, but the reduction strategies are all presented in the Climate Action Plan, we focus them on a few different issue areas. Energy efficiency, transportation, solid waste reduction are some of the main ones where we really focused in on and tried to find ways that the city could continue to grow, but in so doing, also reduce greenhouse gas emissions into the future and comply with state regulations. If you have any questions about those reduction strategies, in particular, I'd be happy to answer them. As I mentioned before, one of the main benefits of the Climate Action Plan was that we thought that it could streamline environmental review within the city, so future projects being subject to CEQA, or future projects being subject to design review, could be found to either be compliant or, or in conflict with the Climate Action Plan. We would also provide developers in the future with guidelines to implement sustainable development, and we really think that there's a lot of other co-benefits. For instance, if the, the Climate Action Plan measures related to improving pedestrian infrastructure and bicycle infrastructure are implemented, you kind of get a more walkable city, a city that's a little bit more vibrant, people are out and about a little bit healthier too. So there's some co-benefits that we tried to highlight in the Climate Action Plan process as well. So, I'll quickly summarize some of the results of the Climate Action Plan. So I said I'd try to stick away from jargon, but I got one more piece of jargon that I have to introduce to you. So we'll talk about the city's greenhouse gas emissions in the year 2030. If you look at that first bullet point on the slide there, you have state target of six MT CO2E, it's kind of an alphabet soup there. So I'll just break that down, so we're all kind of on the same page. So the MT CO2E, that's an abbreviation for standardized units of greenhouse gases. Greenhouse gases have different potencies for how much they heat the atmosphere, so scientists have kind of created this equivalency unit, so that it stands for metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalencies. For our purposes, we can just think of them as units of greenhouse gases. Those units can be emitted over certain time periods, so we're going to talk about it over each year, and they can be emitted over a number of people, so per capita. So the state has established a target of six units per year per capita to meet some legislative goals. We projected out the city's emission based on those growth estimates to the year 2030, and we looked at where the emissions would be if the city did not adopt the Climate Action Plan, but the state went forward with all of the legislation that was in place. And what we found is that the City of Galt's emissions in the year 2030, even without the Climate Action Plan, would actually comply with the state's 2030 goals, so the emissions would be about 5.38, whereas the state goal is six units per year per capita. Now, looking at 2050, the picture is not quite as rosy. The state has really ratcheted down that requirement, so instead of six units per year per capita, they're looking at two units per year per capita, so it's quite a bit lower, and the city would be anticipated to be continuing to grow between the years 23, 2030 and 2050. So if we, again, just look at those statewide programs without the city's cap, the city's emissions would be around 4.02 units per year per capita. So knowing that, we saw a, a clear need for cap, the cap to include reduction strategies to get the, those emissions lower and lower. So we threw everything we could at it. Unfortunately, the, with the reduction measures that were included in the Climate Action Plan before you, we weren't, we were able to show that there would be substantial reductions in emissions, so going from 4.02 to 2.75 units per year per capita, but unfortunately, that's obviously still not down to that two units per year per capita level that we're shooting for. Because the Climate Action Plan at this stage cannot be, cannot show that the city would meet those statewide reduction goals, we included a schedule for update of the Climate Action Plan into the future. Those updates will allow us to, or the city, to incorporate better information, incorporate newer technologies, and newer reduction strategies, and also respond to any legislative changes that might be made. However, I, I do want to stress, though, that the city would be meeting those 2030 goals, so the only problem is with the 2050 goal, which is quite a bit of ways in the future. So, that's kind of a summary of, of where, what the cap did, now kind of the next steps of the Climate Action Plan. Really where the rubber is going to meet the road on a lot of this is the sustainability checklist, which was included in the Climate Action Plan. The sustainability checklist would be integrated into the city's development review process and development, and development applications, where developers would be presented with a pretty concise list of exactly what they do have to do to comply with the Climate Action Plan, as long as they include those necessary elements, they would be able to show consistency with the Climate Action Plan, and it could really help to streamline the environmental review process, as developers really know at the start of the process exactly what sort of standards the city's going to be holding them to. It also allows the city to control a lot of the regulations around greenhouse gas emissions reductions, and kind of takes out any uncertainty of whether the, you know, the state maybe in the future is going to come in and kind of top-down, say, "This is what you have to do on a local basis." The sustainability checklist is made for Galt, and specifically for your jurisdiction. Now, Chris did touch on this a little bit before, but I do just want to kind of underscore how helpful and involved the Air District has been during this process. So the Air District has reviewed the Climate Action Plan pretty much every step of the way, they provided with, us with tons of data and information, they reviewed the Climate Action Plan as well as the environmental document that was presented, that was released for public review, and they provided comments on both those documents, so the document is better for their involvement. That concludes, concludes my presentation, sorry for kind of running through all of that, so if I need to go back to anything, please let me know. I'd be happy to answer any questions, I might call Rod Stinson as well to help me out.
Council, end discussion?
Yeah, thank you, thank you. In looking through, and I, you know, I, I didn't read every word of this document, but I did focus on Chapter Five, which was the emission reduction measures. When I, when I look through here, a lot of these regulations appear to be either state law or, or federal law, correct?
Quite a few of them are, yeah, we tried to kind of piggyback.
So we don't have any latitude on whether we choose or choose not to implement these, is that correct?
On, on some of them, that, that would be the case, others would be more elective, that the city was being a little bit more proactive.
And I take, for example, where is it? On the, where is it? The zero, was it the ZN?
Zero net energy.
Zero net energy. That one, it, it, you know, I, I think it's going to be a shock to the building community, is what it's going to be. I mean, where you've got to, when you build a home, essentially what this is saying is, whatever energy you use in your home, you have to produce on-site. That's correct.
Yeah, that's correct.
So you, and they're also looking at, in, in future subdivisions, we're going to be reducing the amount of natural gas that is going into the subdivisions, or the number of homes that are allowed to use natural gas.
You know, at this point, unknown, because we do have some time to kind of get to that zero net energy and the reduction of the use of natural gas. My hunch is that the state's push is going to be to eliminate the single burns at, in all homes at some point. I mean, currently, there was, we've been late in getting to counsel with that, but there has been a comprehensive building code update in 2020.
Right.
That really focused on green energy, and one of the big items on that list was the use of solar on all new development. So, the state, as you mentioned, is already really pushing in this direction, and we essentially almost don't have a choice with a lot of the measures. Some are preferable, I mean, some are standard, modern planning practices.
Yes, some of them we, we're already doing.
Yeah, we're already doing, but the zero net energy game is a big game changer, but the state is already going in that direction. And as I mentioned, we, we were kind of late with the Climate Action Plan, so it makes some of it kind of like a moot point because of the green building code update in 2020. So, it's.
Wow, big changes.
Big changes. The zero net energy is a game changer.
That is.
How is the, so this is fairly new, are you done, I'm sorry, Chris?
I just had a, one, one quick question. What about on, do you know, Chris, on remodels, how is the, how is the, that applied, or do you know?
I don't remember the specific language, I, I think it depends on the extent.
Okay.
So I think on major rehabs, and they're coming in for the building permits, there's going to be, you know, requirements that they're going to have to meet for their energy consumption. So I would say it depends on size of the rehab, you know, a big commercial TI or a commercial rehab is going to have to adhere to the new building code requirements. Same thing with residential construction.
Okay.
If they're expanding, putting a room on, I don't know if that triggers solar, there, I think there are some exemptions.
Okay.
So the larger projects, certainly so.
Okay, thank you. So, as cities are coming online, I mean, are we kind of late in the game to adopt a Climate Action Plan, or are we kind of, is it kind of, other cities still bringing this in?
That's a good question. I, the last time I looked, I think there was, I was looking at maybe like 150 other jurisdictions and, and kind of growing from there. So it's not, you're not, I would, I would imagine you're maybe middle of the pack. I think, I think the vanguard was maybe bigger cities that had a little bit more resources to throw around with this sort of thing, but now there's this sort of grant funding is kind of proliferating, it's allowing a lot more cities, a lot more counties that might not have necessarily put this at the forefront, to then kind of implement it and sort of take control of the process on their own.
So I saw your, when I was reading the staff report, I thought was pretty cool that actually, you know, we're already, even though it's only ten years away, I guess, that we're already compliant. I mean, would you say that's mainly because we're a smaller community, maybe less traffic? Or what do you, what would you, what would you contribute that to, us being at a lower number already, in your opinion?
A lot of it, so it's, it's kind of per capita are these sort of standards we are trying to hit, so it sort of scales based on the city that you, that you are looking at. I think a lot of it was actually kind of like Chris was saying, like, these building codes are getting much more stringent, so we were able to incorporate, every new home is going to be, is going to be more energy efficient. The new building code is requiring renewable energy on, on new residence, residences already, and electricity throughout the entire grid is getting cleaner, so those things really contributed. And with the growth estimates that we are working with, a lot of the, you know, a lot of the future emissions were coming for, from new development within the city. So new development is going to be required to meet all these requirements, making it much more efficient, so these new units are going to be much more efficient than old units. So that might be, kind of puts you guys ahead of another jurisdiction that, which maybe experienced a lot of growth ten years ago, or fifteen years ago, where they have a less efficient building stock already.
So what he was trying to say is, good planning practices encourage that?
Oh, I was going to say, it must.
A carryover from the previous planning.
I was thinking it was your green bike lanes, that's reasonable. That's what I was thinking, that's why.
It is, yeah.
So, does this, does this factor in, like, does it, you know, you've shown us projected to be at a certain number in 2050, right? 2050? It's going to be not quite making the grade at that point, based on whatever. I'm sure all this factors in, like, what I think, and I'm, again, you're the expert, the biggest pollutant obviously would be automobiles, right? I read. I read an interesting article today that says, like, in ten years from now, you will not be able to buy a brand-new automobile that's, 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 you know, gasoline-powered. You just won't. They won't offer no new models. So does that factor in? Because it seemed like that would make a, that's going to make a huge dent.
Yeah, yeah, that's a very, that's a great point, yeah. All, the, the models that we use were based off of the California state legislation that was in place at the time, and that's kind of where the, where those requirements are coming from in large part, is California was sort of ahead of the curve, and as far as promoting electric vehicles. So it does assume, even if it's not all-electric vehicles at that point, just with fleet turnover, new, new vehicles, whether they're gas or diesel, are much more efficient than older vehicles, too. So just with fleet turnover, you're getting a lot of reduction. So even though, even, even though the, the overall maybe like activity in the city is increasing, that per unit of, like, vehicle mile traveled, that is just being, becoming less emissions-intensive. So we did try to capture that in these targets. I think that's also in large part why the, we're meeting those twenty thirty thresholds and some of the reductions we're seeing in twenty fifty, too.
Okay, so my last question is just towards Chris. So, I, I like her, I, I, you know, picked certain pieces out, took some notes, but the way I'm understanding the staff report is that we're, the adoption of this plan tonight is just basically, it's not us approving any particular, specific project of any sort. It's, it's basically just enacting it, we're setting forth guidelines that now every project from this point forward are going to be held accountable to, right? Or, or is it accountable to, like, they're going to have to match up with it?
Yeah, no.
Or is it going to be a situation where you're like, hey, does this check a box towards the Climate Action Plan? Or is it like going to be mandatory stuff?
No, you're, you're absolutely correct. So it basically puts another layer of review or planning staff. So currently, you know, when projects come in, staff review projects for consistency with the general plan, zoning code, map act, other SEQA, whatever other planning documents we have in the hopper. This adds another review for staff. But with the checklist, it does put some of the onus on a developer to look at that checklist, go down it and mark the items that are in the checklist, and how this, their project would meet the Climate Action Plan. So, you're correct. Each project is going to have to adhere to the requirements of the Climate Action Plan. And what it does is, without this Climate Action Plan, when we had environmental documents, we had to do separate analysis for GHG additions from that project. This removes that component, and we're just then finding that consistency then with the Climate Action Plan, which then meets that GHG reduction requirement.
Okay. Then my last question is, so what's the immediate impact right now on development? Like, what, if, if we pass this tonight, what's the immediate impact that would, that would have on someone, say, that's mid-development on something now, or something that's actually in the planning process right now? Is there, is it heavy? I just worry about, because, you know, I deal with a lot of construction stuff from other business-
Sure.
-and I know they got the title, is it Title Twenty-four? Is that what-
Yeah, Title Twenty-four.
... requires lightbulb, light fixtures and all that stuff? Yeah. I mean, it's like, all I do is complain about that stuff. You hear contractors complain about it. So I'm just worried, you know, is this something that we're going to, like, just drop the hammer, like, because we're adopting this tonight?
No. I don't see any slowdown in development based on the Climate Action Plan, and as I said earlier, a lot of the requirements are already there for development. So, and the big one is, is the use of solar. That's probably the biggest concern we get now is, look, they got to put solar on every new building, and so builders have kind of struggled with that, and we had a big rush of building permits at the end of twenty nineteen to get in under the old code. So, I, we'll still see development. I haven't seen any hiccup based on the new building code, and I wouldn't expect it as part of the cap.
So tell me about drive-throughs. I'm just kidding. I'm joking. No, I don't want to-
So one of the concerns we had with solar was that if you have a single-story smaller house, the trees will block the solar, and with emissions and gases, we don't, we want more trees. So the California Energy Commission just passed a proposal where you can have your own solar on your house, or you can have a neighborhood share where the solar's somewhere else in the neighborhood for the clean emissions. So, they just, just got news.
Can I read somewhere in there, though, in, in those cases, there are exemptions also? On, on, I thought I read something based on topography.
Yeah, exactly. If you're in very steep terrain or very forested terrain often, and you just don't have that solar potential, you can get exempted. I'm not sure if that's too big of a concern in the Central Valley here for us, so, but you can make, you can always make that argument, but-
So Buffalo, New York, they can't find it there.
Well, now you can have a neighborhood share.
Yeah.
I just have a couple of comments, not a lot of questions. I, too, cannot attest that I read every single word, but I did also focus on emissions. And, you know, in the region, there's an expectation that we reduce greenhouse gas emissions by nineteen percent, and we're part of that region, and so, so I think it is important to do whatever we can, and it looks like we're, we're going to be ahead of the curve a little bit on this, so. But the one thing I want to, just a couple of things I want to mention is, I think that just by the nature of our community, and, you know, you hear the term bedroom community thrown around a lot, but one of the reasons why many people that I've talked to, as well as myself, moved to GALT was for all of the reasons, you know, a small community, good tight-knit community, but also I can go home, get in my, in my house and not have to worry about traveling anywhere. You know, it's just, from work, I come home and that's it. And so, we have a lot of people that walk in our community, starting right about now, down Corillian Boulevard, in any given evening, you see families pushing strollers, you know, with kids on little turning-wheel bikes. So, I think our community, just the way we're built, lends itself to reducing emissions. And the one thing I did want to mention that hasn't been mentioned tonight is that there is a consequence to reducing greenhouse gas emissions. When you talk about, you know, people that develop homes, or, or commercial buildings, or contractors, they're going to be passing that cost on to the, the consumer. And so, an advantage for us, I believe, is that, and, and not so much anymore as it was ten years, fifteen years ago, but GALT homes are a little more affordable than the same type of home in another community. But I think we're going to see that gap kind of close because we don't have the volume. You know, most of our, a lot of our builders don't have, we're not building, you know, a hundred and fifty homes a month here. It's, it's, so, I think that, just keep in mind that there is going to be a cost passed on to the consumer, and we can't ignore that. And so, not that it will necessarily directly affect, you know, anyone in the room, but as people in the community move from maybe, let's say, an eleven-hundred-square-foot home to a two-thousand-square-foot home that's new and falls under the regulations, we're going to, they're going to have, that, there's going to be that big issue. And then just lastly, you know, my, my home have solar on it, and, and I absolutely love it, but it certainly is nowhere near paying for all the energy that is consumed in our house. So, it's, but it does a good job. But, but I will say that, you know, getting a home to, you know, get to that point where it's even closer is going to be interesting, so.
Thank you. Any other council member have any comment, question? Is any, is any public comment?
We have one public comment, Karen Hess.
Hello, counsel. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity. I rushed home from work, and so thanks for allowing me to be here tonight. So, to answer your question, Member Farmer, on what is, if you ask me what top-five things I would want, my number one would be a teen center in GALT. So I am here representing the GALT Teen Center, and so I just wanted to share a couple updates with you about some events coming up that we are really proud of. So, I was here probably several months ago and shared our journey, and then also some of our vision and things that we're working on, and held some workshops, which you guys, some of you participated in, so thank you for that. So since then, we've been building a lot of momentum, and, for example, not only with the community, but also with the teens. So in January, we had a hot chocolate and paint night, free paint night, and forty kids showed up, and it was this beautifully eclectic group of, of teens that were all in a room painting together, and when they left, we're very, very proud of what they had accomplished that night. So, in addition, on our year anniversary of being a nonprofit organization, just right around there, we were able to sign a facility use agreement, and so we will be having our grand opening of our physical location in GALT on April third. So we would like to, it's a Friday, and we are having a ribbon-cutting ceremony at 2:00 PM, and so we would like to invite you and the community out for that event. So, real excited. I have some flyers here, so I'll, I'll leave those with you. It's at the GALT place, so they will be using their facility from three to six, the recreation room there. We have, we'll have a pool table, air hockey, video games, lounge area, and art supplies, a keyboard, things like that, to really help make the teens feel welcome here in GALT. And we like that it's centrally located, that a lot of the GALT high school kids can walk over, and then ultimately, hopefully, we can get, figure out a way to get the Liberty kids over to the side, too. We held in December a design workshop with Astralita Teens, and they shared a lot of really good ideas with us, too, and we're very, very engaged in the idea of having a teen center. So the other event that we wanted to share with you is on March twenty-eighth, we, at Brewster's, we're having a dinner, twenties-themed, dapper dinner dance. So it's to raise money here, and there's a silent auction, it's to raise money for the teen center, and tickets are fifty dollars with, with the fee for, you know, the event break. And so we would love if you would come out and join us, and you could wear your twenties costume or not, but we really hope to see you all there, and, and again, thank you for this opportunity. You guys have allowed us to come and share our ideas, and we're very excited, and it's something that we felt very, very passionate about, and so we hope that that continues as we move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
So it's at two o'clock?
It's, the ribbon-cutting is at two o'clock, and-
The kids won't be out of school yet.
Yeah, so the ribbon-cutting's for the community, and then the teen center will open at three, I'm glad you asked that question. We are having Mountain Mike's offer to do pizza for the teens when they come, so we're real happy. So once they get there, from three to six, we'll be open for the teens, but the two o'clock is for the community and any adults that want to come out today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Hess. Uh-huh? Thank you. Do the next speaker. The real Karen Hess.
Good evening. My name's Karen Hess. I'm with the Sacramento Air District. I'm here tonight to support the staff's recommendation to approve the Climate Action Plan in front of you. We congratulate the city on its successful application for the Energy Commission grant that funded this cap development and other planning work on Corillian Boulevard, and the GALT market community plan, like Chris had mentioned earlier tonight. Additionally, we wanted to share that the Air District staff worked with your staff and consultants on this effort by providing numerous strategies, example strategies that were being implemented around the state in other smaller, similar cities in rural areas of the state. And we use staff from a program called the Governor's Civic Spark Program. They offer fellows a year of service, and so they were very helpful in researching strategies that could be helpful to GALT's development. The cap will streamline the SEQA process for your development projects. It will implement many of the city's general plan policies, and put the city and its residents on a path to energy savings, so saving money, using of cleaner vehicles, and providing safe, active transportation options. All of this will improve the public health of your residents and the small-town environment that you cherish. The Air District looks forward to continuing to support the city in reaching its air quality and climate change goals, and I thank you tonight for your time and attention.
Thanks for hanging in there.
Thank you.
Thanks for staying.
Thank you. All right, any more public comment on this agenda item? All right, recommended action, adopted resolution, adopting the GALT Climate Action Plan, initial study, negative declaration, and approving the GALT Climate Action Plan.
Removed.
Second.
So motion moved by Councilmember Campion, second by Councilmember Lamson.
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion carried five to zero. Thank you. Next agenda item, M, communication?
Nothing.
Okay, and then next agenda item, N, city clerk's report.
Yes, we currently have two vacancies on the GALT Historic Preservation Advisory Committee due to the expiration of the term of Office of Ida De Nier, GALT Area Historical Society Representative, and Eric Shiner, Member-at-Large. Both members chose to not reapply. The clerk's office received one application from Dan Tarnaski, a member of the GALT Area Historical Society, and clerk's office is still advertising for a member-at-large. So it is a council nomination.
So because he lives in Elk Grove, does he have to be the member-at-large?
He is a GALT Preservation Advisory Committee.
So the Historic Society Representative?
Right.
So he fills that role.
Okay, just like the planning committee. Okay.
Yeah.
Can you make a motion there?
Yes, we need a first and a-
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Farmer, and second by Vice Mayor Lozano. May I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Campion?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion first, five to zero. Thank you. Comments by staff? Mr. Saly?
Yeah, just real quick, I just wanted to thank everybody. We've had a real good response on the battery drop-off box. We've gotten a very large amount of batteries, so, the one thing I would also want to make sure that people are aware is, it's only for the household batteries, like the, you know, the As, double As, whatever, triple As, Cs, Ds, and the nine volts, I think, and the little, like, watch batteries or hearing aid batteries, those kinds of things. I think we got a few, like, you know, the lithium tool-type batteries and stuff, and it's not for that, so, but it's, it's clearly marked on there, and we've got the information out, but just really appreciate the response we've gotten. Thanks.
Community development director. All right, yeah.
Not a chance.
All right, Ms. Vanstein?
No update this evening, thank you.
Mr. Solis?
Go flea market.
Thank you.
Jeep soccer.
Nothing further, please.
What?
Nothing further.
Nothing further?
No, no. Nothing further.
Nothing further.
I just want to put my condolences out there for the family of Si Mastado, who, even though he worked at BIA, he was a Stanford graduate engineer, he has been helping out at the GALT High School Drama and Band in technical part, and cancer took him very, very fast, so. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I don't want to prolong the, a long meeting, but I do know we're, we have a couple of items coming, or a couple of events coming to the flea market. One's a health fair, is that this month, and then a carnival next month.
Correct. During spring break, we'll have a carnival to go along, you know, anticipating the kids being off school.
Right, thank you. And then, lastly, and I think this is more for, for the council, but I think we need to, at least it would be my suggestion, to bring back an item, or have staff bring back an item, to talk about expectations of conduct of council members and commission members as we move forward. I don't know that we've even evaluated that, and I know we've had some issues in the past, and, so I think it'd be good just to get that out in the open, and, and really have kind of a frank discussion about what that means for our organization, and, and, and I've had a couple of commission members ask me, hey, what, what do we, you know, what is that, what do we do, or how do we do something? And so, if we could just get kind of an overview of, of what our policies are, and, and then in the future, what they might look like. Is that too confusing, Mr. Haglund?
I understand.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Farmer.
future, what they might look like. Is that too confusing, Mr. Haglund?
I understand.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Farmer?
Just want to say we have Earth Day coming up, April 18th. Barbara's pretty excited about that. Yep, posters up all over town, and there's actually a whole bunch of stuff going on. I can't even think of all of them, but look for the posters, look online. It's going to be a busy spring, I think, so that's all I have.
You know, I attended Chamber Lunch on February 20th, and there was a two-speaker, Aaron Walker from CPA, and Barbara Payne, and she explained a lot about the Earth Day. And I also like to thank you, everybody come to the podium for the public comment, and I really appreciate that still in the lobby, there's a lot of people, they're still listening. They're almost a four-hour, and thank you for the staff, thank you for the council member, and almost four hours. Thank you. Nothing further, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.